Okay, good evening. I will call to order the Provo City Planning Commission hearing for November 14th, 2018. It is 6:02 PM. It looks like we have a pretty full house tonight, so I'll just let you know in advance that we will be limiting the length of time individuals can speak. We'll have a timer that's up that will beep when your time is up. So, to give everybody the opportunity to weigh in tonight that wants to, we just need to do that to keep things moving. Okay, we have five items on the agenda tonight. The items that are marked with an asterisk are legislative in character and the Planning Commission will be making a recommendation to City Council on those items. The items without an asterisk are administrative and the Planning Commission will be making a decision on those items. We'll start this evening with a prayer by Mr. Anderson and Pledge of Allegiance by Ms. Ellsworth.
Father in heaven, we are very grateful for the opportunity we have to meet tonight to discuss matters of Provo City. We're grateful for all the blessings we enjoy in this country and this community. Pray that thou will bless us tonight that decisions will be made in the best interest of the community and all those involved and say things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to ask the commissioners to state their name and whether they have a conflict of interest this evening.
My name is Robert Knudsen and I have no conflict of interest.
Deborah Jensen, I have no conflicts.
Dave Anderson, no conflicts.
Shannon Ellsworth, no conflicts.
Thank you. All right, item one this evening. Rachel and Gainer Brunson request a conditional use permit for a major home occupation for a recording studio located at 1043 East, 2620 North in the R 1.8 zone. This is in the Rock Canyon neighborhood and Mr. Ardmore will present this item.
Thank you. Okay, so this item, just to give a little background first, may be helpful. So, you can see the property up here to give you some context where it's at. It's 1068 East, 2620 North in the Rock Canyon neighborhood. Home is here on the corner. So, a little bit of history on the property. The owners purchased the property in 2005 and 2010 there was this addition here for the recording studio. Okay, so, since the addition for the recording studio, there have been a number of zoning enforcement files, zoning enforcement actions on the property due to complaints. And those were for his minor home occupation. He had a minor home occupation, the applicant had a minor home occupation for the recording studio, which has certain regulations. Big ones on that is two customers per hour and limited hours. So, with all these violations, it was becoming apparent that the business couldn't operate under that type of business license. So, the choice was made to apply for this major home occupation. The major home occupation is also affected by regulations. Some newer regulations were made by the council within the last few months, which limit the hours and number of vehicles, number of customers as well. I'll get into that a little bit more later. Just wanted to kind of take you through the property here. One of the major concerns of staff and the neighbors is the percentage of the structure that is used for the business as opposed to the residence. In chapter 1441, there's a limitation that the business cannot be more than 49% of the dwelling. You can see here, the original dwelling is primarily this portion, while the business use, as far as we can tell from the floor plans that came in for the building permit, is this portion. And from the other street, you can see the scale of that. And then one more picture from the back. So, the 49% is a concern. I will hope that the applicant can address that when he comes up to speak, because from what we can tell, he's well over that and there needs to be some solution there. So, here's what has changed recently with a major home occupation. So, the customer limit is up to six per hour and that is limited in hours, eight to five for up to two customers and five to nine. And that customers don't unreasonably disturb the peace and quiet in there, but so on, let's see if I can have a good picture. So, to be able to have those six customers, you have to have six off-street parking spaces. You have to be able to house all the people that are coming to the business off of the street. He has a two-car garage here. He can tandem behind that for two more spaces and he has a non-conforming concrete pad over here that can house two cars. So, he's able to meet that six off-street parking spaces. He's able to meet that condition. The hours would be a condition on this property, which has been an issue in the past. And if you look down here, promotional meetings, this is kind of a big issue that we've heard from feedback. What you should have received, let me kind of tangent over to that, you should have received a few different things over the last week, a few different packets, I would say. One of them is from Steve and Luke, who happens to be the neighborhood chair's husband. He sent a PDF to you, kind of describing the history of violation, some evidence that he has found and so forth. So, I hope you've had time to review that. In addition to that, a report was sent to you from a neighborhood vice chair, kind of compiling all the comments that have been received about this application for this major home occupation. It's organized from nearest to the home to furthest from the home and there is a good mix in there of support for the business to continue and also some opposition to the business. The last thing you would have received today was from the applicant himself, showing context that he has of supporting this business and supporting this application. So, you can refer to those for kind of the background and some of the conditions that we're suggesting. One of those is that the business be limited to six vehicles, six business-related vehicles at any time. Okay, so that's for your business hours and for your promotional meetings. So, that's a condition that we're suggesting of staff. The other one is just kind of a generic, be limited by chapter 1441 of the Provo City Code. That's kind of standard. So, all those hours and standards that are in there that you see. And another one is that we would take the hour regulation from up here for your regular business meetings. That limits it to 9:00 PM. We would suggest that that same time restriction be put on for promotional meetings. So, there's different types of promotional meetings that occur at this residence, firesides, kind of rehearsals, concerts, if you will, that have gone late into the night. We feel that putting that restriction on there as a conditional use definitely would mitigate that harm that's happening to the community due to the business. So, we've suggested those conditions. Trying to see if there's anything else I wanted to say. We recommend approval with those conditions, but have opened it up to the Planning Commission for review. We know that there may be some public comment and would be open to any suggestions from the Planning Commission on the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
So, just relative to the conditions in 144160, that's not optional, right? They have to, that's a minimum standard.
Right, those are minimum standards.
If we wanted to impose more strict conditions, we could do that as well.
That's correct.
So, like, for example, operating past 9:00 PM, that's a deal breaker.
That would not be permitted.
Just from some of the materials that we received with the staff report, it does look like, from the photos, I'm going to take them at face value, it looks like there probably are more than six people using the studio at a time. I know this was talked about a year ago and I don't really want to relive the discussion on what is a customer, but would it just be six persons?
And that's been redefined in this new, in this revision by the council. It's an individual, a customer is an individual. So, if it's, if you're...
If you're a family of five.
If you're a family of five and you do a musical act, you're five customers.
Okay. Provided that they comply with the conditions in that section of the code, are you aware of any basis that the commission would have for not approving the conditional use?
The only sticking point that we see is the 49% and we would need to address that somehow.
Thanks.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff? If not, I'd like to ask the applicant to present. Please state your name for the record and I believe there's a sign-in sheet also to sign in.
Yes, my name is Gainer Brunson and I'll just put my name here. Okay, am I good to go ahead?
You are good, thank you.
Okay, so, first of all, I'd like to address the issue of the 49% and we're not using the downstairs for a studio. We have that as a TV room and couches and a pool table and there's a kitchen down there as well. And so, if you look at that.
CJ. I'm sorry if I might step in, Chair. Do you mean the basement or the first floor level?
The basement, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, because we've gone over this before and, you know, covered that extensively, so, does that help?
It may. Please continue.
Okay. Yeah, and there's other parts we're not using for business as well. There's storage, there's, there's just room that's pretty much just sitting there. On the other thing, we've only received two violations and they were both dropped. So, many violations might, I mean, I don't know if you can call too many, but we kind of pride ourselves in not getting complaints at all. There was one time a police officer was called on us and it was early in the morning and I did crank it up really loud and the door was opening and closing. It was about 5:30, 6 o'clock. Big Buddha was over. We were helping someone out. It wasn't a paid gig at all. We were just helping someone promote a little concert. So, a police officer came over and we talked to them and then, and then, and then later, an officer came over with a city person and they discussed our situation and I says, "Well, we have been doing a lot of free things in the studio. Our firesides are basically for free." There's been a lot of things we've done for free and he says, "How do we do an event for free?" And there was some question on that. So, we were trying to get some answers and he says, "Well, just go ahead and call the city person and get event permit." So, I called the city person. I says, "Well, we do have a business license, but we want to have a little event here." And she said that, "Well, how many people are you planning to have over your place?" I says, "Well, not very many." She said, "Do you plan to have over 700?" And I said, "No." And she says, "Well, you don't need a permit for that." So, we went ahead and proceeded. So, we've had some kind of confusion about exactly what the rules were and what the definition of a customer was. One time we were told by a city attorney that a customer could mean a choir, could be in a group. And so, we proceeded along with that, thinking that we were pretty much in compliance with the ordinance of the city. So, anyway, to address those. So, do I keep going?
Please.
Okay. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to show a couple of videos. It won't take longer than 10 minutes total and I think it kind of helps to show what we do there, what's going on. I did some video, I actually videotaped the neighbor talking, shows kind of the map I put together, a little bit of homework I did on this. So, it'd be video one, if you don't mind. Hello, everyone. This is Gainer Brunson here at Rock Canyon Studios here in the Rock Canyon neighborhood. You gotta love Rock Canyon. That's why I named the studio Rock Canyon. Anyway, I'd like to ask for your support. I have submitted for a major home occupation. The hearing is a week from Wednesday. Don't let that scare you. Major home occupation does not mean I'm getting bigger and now I'm going commercial. I'm actually going smaller. Let me explain that to you. I've, I pretty much currently have a minor home occupation permit, but what that means is the city is telling me now that it means two people, two customers, which is basically two people. So, I just finished the Osmond's Christmas album, so to have Marilyn J over, that means I can't have one of their wives over. This is Karen. She's my angel. There you are. So, that's kind of a tough situation. And so, there is probably no way I can actually have a studio under the minor home occupation permit, the way things are. So, in order to continue on as a studio, even on a small scale, I need to have my major home occupation permit. So, this is the studio entrance side here to my house and as you can see, the side of the street is pretty much me and my brother Arden, who lives next door, and he has a house across the street and they're really cool about the studio. Hi, my name is Arlen Brunson. I'm one of the Brunson brothers. I live right here and my brother and my parents, myself, have lived in this neighborhood just under 20 years and we've been recording the Brunson Brothers' music next door here at Gainer's house and we've been doing this for a long time. And there are only four houses on this block and only two houses that face the street and three of them are, I guess you could say, Brunson houses.
Hey, what's up? My name is CJ. I'm new to the neighborhood. I just found out the Rock Canyon Studios right across the street and I saw their situation and they are awesome. I'm excited to have them in the neighborhood.
Okay, you guys, so we pretty much have this whole street. My brother owns that house there and he's got people living there, they're excited about the studio. Of course, the biggest concern would be our neighbor right here. Now, down on this side of the street, these guys are really cool with the studio. We're good friends and these neighbors here love what I'm doing. They actually took pictures of the construction. Okay, so I put smiley faces on the houses that approve what I'm doing. There is one question with Major General Anderson that showed up. Now, he did originally tell me, "Just as long as I'm not doing anything to disturb him after 10 o'clock at night." I don't know if that's changed tonight, so, but I appreciated him here regardless. But those smiley faces, they've not only been supportive, they've not just been neighbors, they have been friends and they have been very supportive. They've even written letters to support what I'm doing. The other, the other houses that aren't marked, yeah, if you want to go ahead and hit pause on that, the other houses that aren't marked, I don't know if they're negative or positive. I do know the 1065 across, that had the smiley face on was negative. But I don't really know the houses that are negative. I haven't been contacted by anyone other than Rachel and Steve Luke, they live right across the street. Originally, we told them, "If there's any complaints or anything that's going on, just text me." They have my number. We go to church with them. We'd sit next to them in church. We would, we were in the nursery, Rachel, my wife is named Rachel. We would watch their kids in nursery and I was sitting next to Steve Luke in Elder's corm and like, "If there's anything wrong, any noise, just text me. We'll fix the problem." He says, "Well, sometimes when the door opens and closes, it might let out a bit of noise." And so, one time they text, only a couple of times, and one time was when there were people playing basketball. I have a basketball hoop out there and they says, "Well, go ahead and stop that." And he says, "We will go ahead and do that." And that wasn't with clients or customers, that was with neighbors playing basketball. So, the last time I got a, we got a text, a complaint from them was in February. And so, we've been trying to figure out how we could best work through this with them to say, "Hey, if there's any complaints, let us know." But it hasn't been so easy. Let's see, another, well, there was a time, yeah, there was a time when she called a police officer. We didn't know she called the police officer that early in the morning when we were doing loud music and I understand that. If it's making loud noise, we're going to shut it down. I had that studio very well-built to insulate the sound so I can have a baby asleep in the bedroom of the house and we could have a full-blown loud concert, rock band. That's how, that's how quiet that studio is. Let's see here, so, so any, any kind of a complaint from a neighbor is a surprise to me. And I, I don't just have neighbors, I have friends. I am surrounded by the best people, friends. Look, friends showed up here today. And the neighbors are friends. And I've been in this neighborhood for quite a while. As a matter of fact, I lived a few houses down about, about 25 years ago and then I moved in. My brother Arden is living right now. I used to live there, have a studio in the basement and then I moved next door to that house. I've had renters there before and then I moved in. And even the people who previously lived in Luke's house that were living there were great friends. They loved what we were doing. Melanie O'Tail was one of them and then she moved and then Stephanie Belsford was another one and we just got along so great with them and there were no issues at all. And now, the current people that live there, Steve and Rachel Luke. There was one time when I got a text from Steve Luke who said, "There's a guy came over to the house and he says, he says, 'Keep that guy from coming over to the house.'" He says, "Hey, we're trying to do good things to the studio." Says, "I don't want that guy coming over to the house." I says, "Well, that guy is living next door. He's a roommate of my brother Arden. He stays there so, every so often and he happens to be the biggest-selling author of Isaiah of desert book." And we've been doing some Isaiah work. We've, we've been on the promotional campaign of Isaiah. We've been interviewing Isaiah scholars at BYU and religion scholars. We've been doing a lot of that kind of stuff and so, he's been wanting to be able to pursue that. But if you, if you guys don't mind, I still have the one last video that kind of shows a little bit of the things that we were doing in the studio. A lot of the stuff we've been doing in the studio, like 90% has been free. We've actually lost money. It takes a lot of time planning and prepping it. Gary, the city attorney, told us that doesn't matter if it's free, if it's related with the business. Well, it doesn't promote the business. We haven't made any money. It doesn't excel the business. It hasn't for us. So, it's a labor of love. So, if you want to go ahead and play the second video, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. So, take a look at some of the things we've done here in this studio. How are you, friends? How are you? It's Jason Chef of the band Chicago. Yes, here I am in Provo, Utah, at Rock Canyon Studios. I found the place I want to hang out, okay? There's an incredible, massive room in there that sounds phenomenal and we're ready to make noise, okay? (singing) No, I can't go on. Can't go on if I'm on my own. Tears grace that brought me here thus far.
Hi, everyone, I'm Russell.
And I'm Graham. Of course, we're Air Supply, and we want to wish everyone watching a musical Christmas.
Peace and love.
To everyone.
We hope you have a musical Christmas.
From the Beach Boys.
Hi, I'm Casey of Casey the Sunshine Band. Have a musical Christmas.
The Brunson Brothers have made guest appearances on over 30 national TV shows, including The Tonight Show and The Merv Griffin Show. They wrote and performed the Rose Parade theme for international broadcast. You might recognize these brothers from their performances on Christmas in Washington and Fox Network's Christmas in Beverly Hills with James Stewart.
(singing) To the world, sing joy, to the world. Everybody sing joy, to the world, sing joy, to the world. Sing joy, to the world.
Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome to the stage war hero and motivational speaker, recipient of the Bronze Star Medal and the Purple Heart, Mr. Gordon L. Yule.
And please recite with me the Pledge of Allegiance for the greatest country on the face of the planet.
Did you know that this man, Nathaniel Green, funded the American Revolutionary War out of his own pocket? He lost everything. Just about bankrupted his family, but what does he have to show for it? This. How grateful we are for his sacrifice.
(singing) Who answered the call in freedom's name? Some will fall, I'll give some, but some give all.
What I love is also this story, it continues. In that congregation was a little 10-year-old boy by the name of John Adams, and he said later in life, "It was on that day that I became a patriot." Why are we not being told these stories in our history books? Why are our children not being told these incredible stories of America? This is our history, and we need to know these stories. We need to share them with our kids and our grandkids, that they may know what's been given for them.
(singing) All right, it will be all right. All right. Everything, everything, all right.
Yes, the Deborah Bonner Unity Gospel Choir. We'd like to welcome you back to our online fireside, and it's a special fireside today, especially since tomorrow is President's Day. It's our President's Day special, along with Black History Month special with the Deborah Bonner Unity Gospel Choir.
Now, that choir is the, that choir is Deborah Bonner Unity Gospel Choir, and Deborah Bonner has worked with, uh, like, the greatest singers on the planet, with Seth Riggs, they do, uh, Stevie Wonder, Michael Jackson. He, she moved up here to Utah, put together a multicultural choir, and I've been helping them out with that. Of course, this permit does not mean we can even have the choir there. So basically, all this shuts down, the choirs, the bagpipes, all that goes, it's gone. So basically, we're just gonna be hiding out, trying to just get by with six, uh, customers at a time when we get this permit. So I don't want, so when anyone says they've had a problem with this in the past, well, this is a whole new game. This is us downsizing. So I think it scared a lot of people to hear us say major home occupation, because they figured, "Oh, this is gonna be more cars." But this is gonna be pretty stealth, this is gonna be pretty quiet. Um, I, I have been telling people, "Do not park on the other side of the street." I want to put a sign up saying, "Do not park on the other side of the street." I would love it if our neighborhood chair and Steve would, uh, accommodate us and say, "Hey, if, if there's noise, text me, we'll stop it immediately." Uh, if there's someone outside, we will run out as fast as we can and check it out to make sure that that isn't someone, uh, from our clients going out and talking or making noise late at night. Of course, we have a, a, a limit at 9 o'clock, and that's fine. So basically, that was the stuff we used to do. We did it for free, we're happy to move forward, uh, with the major home occupation, it's the only way we can work. Deborah Bonner, with that choir, they became the LDS Church, the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints Choir, representing the NAACP, the church at the NAACP at the Joe Smith Memorial And that is the first art, the, well, I shouldn't say art, there's non-members, but the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints finally has a gospel choir, and the NAACP has taken that choir on, and they sing in Texas at the NAACP National Conference. They invited them to sing. They could have had any Baptist choir throughout the country. They chose the LDS Gospel Choir. And I don't know if Deborah Bonner is here tonight, but, okay, there's, anyway. Um, uh, so anyway, I just turn the time back over to you guys, or whatever's next. Thank you.
If you'll stay at the podium, I think the commissioners may have a few questions for you. Ms. Ellsworth?
Hey there. Is more than half of this structure, uh, being used by, like, a commercial business or a business?
No, we've actually gone through that, and, and we've, because that was a big, a deal at the beginning, to get the, to get the, um, minor home occupation permit, we had to go through and identify that at the get-go. So those numbers are there. Um, we do have that whole basement that's not being used in the studio, um, and then there's other rooms throughout. So, uh, we actually did the equations that, that we were in compliance with that as well.
Okay. I, go for it.
If I may, um, with the news that, uh, with the information that he's not using that basement level at all in the, in the new addition, uh, we've done the math over here, and he's just below that 49% with those top two floors of the addition.
Oh, really? Okay. Great.
Um, so I do a question, in the basement, it looks like there's two bathrooms.
Yes.
Is that for business use?
Well, I use it personally. I mean, what's the definition of business use? Because, um, I mean, I use the kitchen, we use the kitchen, we use the living room.
Okay.
Would that mean that if someone went down there to use the bathroom, that would be in violation?
That I don't know. I just, it looks like that would be the bathroom you would use if you were a customer, and so I wonder if that, does that impact our calculations? What do you think, Aaron?
Yeah, I was not counted, uh, is there no bathroom on the second level or top level?
There's no bathroom on the second top level, yeah.
Yeah, I think those would be tied to the business, though.
Well, then we could have people come, well, yeah, what do we do about that one? I mean, I don't think that's gonna put us over the mark personally, but, because that's such a small area, it's just right at the bottom of the stair.
Does it include the circulation space? Would it include the circulation space to, uh, reach the bathroom from upstairs?
I think it would.
So, yeah.
So the bathrooms by themselves would put it over the 49% with, with, without using any of the bottom level, he's just barely under the 49%.
Okay, what if just one bathroom was used for?
You're over the 49%.
With the one bathroom?
Yeah, and the circulation area to get down to the bathroom puts it over the 49%.
Okay, I don't know what area you're counting on that map.
So before, with the first floor and the second floor of the addition, that was totaling, uh, approximately 3,666 square feet. Uh, from the numbers that we have, 49% would be 3,675 square feet. So if we add a 42-square-foot bathroom here, plus the, the stairwell to get there, it's, it's close, it's probably over.
Okay, so if you add, so that's, if you add one of those bathrooms. Okay, so you, I, now there's that storage room, you're not adding that, right? So nothing else on the basement's being added? Just that one bathroom?
So, members of the commission, the condition is, or the rule is in the code, 49%. It's up to Mr. Brunson to work with staff and convince us that he's gonna be less than that. I think you can move on.
Well, there's other space, too, that, um, I mean, uh, like the top floor, um, there's a whole room back in there on, on the top floor of the studio that's not being used for business. So what about that?
So work with staff away from this meeting, and let's see if you come into compliance.
Is that gonna be like a two-week thing? Does it have to be submitted, then it'll be another two weeks before it?
No, I think you should come meet with us on Monday or Tuesday, and let's get this figured out.
Would it have to go through another whole planning meeting?
No.
Okay.
You're just working with staff.
Great, awesome, sounds great. Okay, is that it for me?
Any other questions?
A question for Aaron.
Yes, Mr. Brunson.
When you count the six spaces, do you count two in the garage?
Yes.
And then two in the driveway, and two in the other driveway?
That's correct.
So where would they put their vehicles?
That's, that's up, that's up to them. So the code states, um, that you have to have number of off-street spaces for what your business is allowed to have at one point, at any one time. And in his business, that's six. So he shows the six vehicles. That's, that's the only regulation that we can really enforce.
I think the planning commission could interpret that as six people coming to the site. So two for the people who live there shouldn't be counted that way. I think you could make that interpretation.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Yes, please.
Mr. Pepperoni.
Mr. Brunson, um, do you intend to have promotional events?
Um, now, the promotional events, is that 12 people?
Yes.
Um, yeah, we'd like to, we'd like to use, you know, 12 people, but we don't plan to, we haven't been doing a lot of things late at night. As a matter of fact, we've been very careful with these late, uh, with these broadcasts doing earlier in the evening. We'd start about 7:00 and end at 8:00, and there'd be a few stragglers leaving 8:30, 9:00, and we, we were hoping to be done by, like, no, nothing in the neighborhood at night. So we're not looking to do anything late night, whatever, so.
So how often would you expect to have promotional events?
We'd like to have, like, uh, four, like, we'd like to use it up.
So the code allows four per month. I would think a, a good condition would be for Mr. Brunson to have to notify staff when he's gonna have the promotional events, so that we can monitor those and number those. The promotional events are limited to 12 people, and, um, a condition that, that ends at 9 o'clock, just like the rest of the business ending at 9 o'clock, I think would be appropriate.
Thank you. I think I have it. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, at this time, I'd like to invite the Rock Canyon Neighborhood Chair to speak to the item.
I am the vice chair, one of the vice chairs. Our chair is out of town currently. My name is Lindy Salmon, and I am here to summarize the document that Laura Middleton, another vice chair, sent on Monday. It's a 22-page document, all of you have it, but I will also summarize it for the benefit of those in attendance. Laura collected and compiled 60 email comments from the Rock Canyon neighborhood, and we divided those by proximity to the studio. Most of the comments, almost half, were received by those closest to the studio, within 500 feet, that's where we made our first cutoff. So we ended up having 37 comments supporting Rock Canyon Studios and 23 that were opposed. So those in favor gave the following reasons. They said the Brunsons are very nice, they're very generous with their studio, they have no complaints. They feel that the studio is an asset to the community, and many have benefited personally from the studio. Um, they are aware of no code violations. Those opposed say that it's not so much the noise of what's happening inside as the crowd that is after the events. That's the noise that is disturbing the neighborhood, and sometimes late at night. In the past, it's been. Uh, they feel that the business has grown, uh, beyond what it was initially promised, and everyone agrees that the Brunsons are talented, that their business is wonderful, but not everyone agrees that the proper place to have it is in a residential area. They feel it would allow more flexibility for the Brunsons if the studio was in a different spot that's zoned for such a business that could grow and expand. Um, also, another concern is that granting this permit opens the door for other neighbors in our neighborhood to do likewise, and then the neighborhood ceases to be what it is. Um, finally, they felt that in the past, Rock Canyon Studio has violated codes and is unsure if they will withhold, uphold, sorry, uphold the current code they are applying for, and they're unsure how the city will be able to enforce that code. So that's a bit of a summary of the comments. Any questions?
Thank you. Any, any questions? Thank you very much. Are there any other neighborhood chairs present this evening who would like to speak to this item? That's coming up, sir.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Ellsworth.
I just wanted to let, um, people know, hopefully this is appropriate, that this meeting can be viewed live, online, on YouTube, and it can also be viewed later on YouTube.
Thank you. Any other neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to this item? And please state your name and sign in for the record.
Let me ask you first, are you talking about other chairs for that neighborhood?
Other chairs.
Chairs from other neighborhoods.
From other neighborhoods as well.
Okay. My name is Pam Jones. I'm a vice chair of Edgemont Neighborhood, which is, uh, I think it borders part of Rock I gave a statement before, when you had a, a meeting on this issue, uh, I mentioned that the Brunson Brothers rented a house across the street I mentioned that the Brunson Brothers rented a house across the street from my mother in Indian Hills Neighborhoods quite a few years ago. The owners were out of, out of the country on an LDS mission, and the Brunsons stayed there. And I know that there were a lot of complaints from the neighbors in Indian Hills Neighborhood about the noise. I have nothing personal against the Brunsons, they're nice people, I've known a couple of them for a while. But I, I felt like it was snowing in here. Those were beautiful videos, but so much of them were irrelevant to the city code. The patriotism, the firesides, religion, all that sort of stuff. Yeah, they're, they're talented people. But there's got to be a better location than a residential neighborhood for this kind of business. I also have a couple of questions. Nothing was said about dressing rooms, places for makeup, hairstyling, costumes, scenery, all the vehicles to bring all these materials in. I just feel like it's inappropriate for a residential neighborhood.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones. Are there any other neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to this item? All right, I will open up the hearing to public comment. Please step to the podium, announce your name, and sign in on the register there. And we will have the time limit on.
My name is Greg Andrus. We own the home immediately to the north, that is behind Gainer's home. We were a little surprised when they built the new addition, and a little apprehensive when we found out what it was for. Our big concern was traffic. Primarily the large moving van-type traffic that would bring in the musical instruments and so forth. Our other concern was how late at night. Probably two years ago, I brought up those concerns primarily on the noise late in the evening. Gainer thanked me for my input, and we have not had any noise in the evening since. If there were any limitations placed on, on them, I would suggest that no drums and no brass instruments after nine o'clock in the evening. Other than that, you can't hear anything on it. And when I mentioned that to Arlen and to Gainer, Arlen's his brother, we haven't heard any of those since about nine o'clock in the evening, and, and we appreciate it. They're good neighbors, and they tried, and have tried very hard not to do anything that would offend anybody in the neighborhood. And if I suggest something, they've been quick to take care of that, and no more problems. Thank you.
Sir?
Mr. Andrus?
I just want to repeat the name, I didn't get the name. Mr. Andrus, would you repeat your name, please?
James Andrus, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak to this item? Please step to the podium and announce your name and sign in, please. Thank you.
My name is John Marshall, I live at ten-nine-eight East two-five-seven-O North, about a hundred yards, two-hundred yards from the house in question. I thought that the video was very interesting, and it wrapped the studio and the flag, the church, the Osmonds, anything else that could be brought in, that was warm and fuzzy. This is not about warm and fuzzy, this is about code. The house either fits the code for the number of bathrooms, the square feet, so forth and so on, or it doesn't. The studio either is in keeping with the existing requirements, or it doesn't. The video that they showed, virtually every single scene in the video, assuming that they were filmed in that studio, is a violation of the code. Whether or not anybody called the police is immaterial. The video shows what goes on there. And I propose that that is in no way in keeping with the existing code. There's an old story about the camel and the tent. And we have seen not only the nose in the tent, but the first hump of the camel is in the tent. And if we're going to expand their ability to use that, we're going to have not only the camel there, but everything that comes from the camel in addition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall.
I'm Maureen LaPray, and I live just about a block away from the Gainer house. I was the neighborhood chair when this issue came up before, when they applied for a variance. And there were, we were at the Tin View Auditorium, and there were a lot of people against and a lot of people for. They were issued the variance, and they made some promises. I think that all the promises, I know all the promises haven't been kept. He showed a very nice landscaped yard after his house would be completed, and he said there would be very low-density parking. That is not the case. I pass by this house daily as I go to and from. We moved into the area because it was zoned, single-family in Provo. And if Provo keeps changing that, that does not meet the zoning that we have there. I wish the Gainers much success in their business. I'm very impressed with what they've done, it's just I don't want them, the business in my neighborhood. I don't want, I don't think I should go build a single-family dwelling in an industrial area and then complain that there's too much noise there. But I golfed with a lady whose daughter is a teenager, and she went to the Gainers' home and had some recording done, and she said, "They do a wonderful job, it's so wonderful what they're doing." And, and I just turned to her, and I said, "Yes, it is, but would you like them as your neighborhood in the river bottoms?" Her silence answered my question. And I think if they want to build their business, there's places in Provo that are zoned for their business, and I would invite them to take it there and not build their business in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaPray.
I'm Dave Maggoby, I live about a half a block from the residence in question, and in the same neighborhood that several others are speaking.
We're just going to put that sign-in sheet in the back.
And we'll have a pen, right?
And we'll have a pen, yeah.
I may need this pen for some note-taking.
Our apologies, please sign in after you speak.
Let me thank you for your service. I realize this is a, a large chunk of time for all of you, and we're grateful in the community that you're here. We value our current zone. I share the view of others who've already spoken about the importance of single-family residences. Some years ago, before Mrs. LaPray with the neighborhood chair, there was an issue in this very same neighborhood over a family that wanted to have a care center for elderly persons in their home. The neighborhood had a similar tension, what a wonderful purpose, and it was decided to say, "No." It didn't happen at all. Here, what we've had, as Mr. Marshall explained, is a step forward, and I believe that the understandings have been violated. My greatest concern has been with the hours and with the many cars that are there on such occasions, whether it's firesides or other activities. Unlike churches and other places that have fire, have such events, the Provo City Library, for example, which would be wonderfully suited for these very same events, there's ample parking, and it's in a different neighborhood. That is a resident, a more business-oriented. To put it in the middle of a neighborhood, and on that part, what you don't see in the drawing is there are not sidewalks on that side of the street, or on the streets that go from it. So you've got young children with dense cars parked in a neighborhood, a residential neighborhood, with trikes and bikes and skateboards, this just doesn't fit. It's not the proper use of a single-family residential zone. So it's cars, it's hours, and it's the number of people. And echoing Mr. Marshall's comment again, if the limit is two, as we saw in the video, there were many occasions when there were far more, as many as, by my count, fifteen or eighteen people in the performing groups themselves. So again, the purpose is laudatory, but in the wrong place, and it shouldn't be allowed to even continue, is my view.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you, commissioners, for giving us an opportunity to be heard. My name is Sid Sandberg, formerly neighborhood chair. And at the time that this first came up, there was a diversity of opinion. The permission was granted, and now with the application for a major home occupation at that location will further enlarge the number of employees allowed, for example, and other things that come with a growing business. Wonderful that this business is growing, they accomplish a great work. But the question that I have been asked to address is the noise factor and the hours of operation, not the internal noise, but the commotion that comes with people gathering to participate in events within the studio. And as was mentioned, there are no sidewalks, either on the street facing south or the street facing east. There's just no way for people to safely traverse without going in the street where the traffic is. The comment that was made when this was first brought up is the zone would allow a ninety-foot pyramid. Thank goodness that wasn't built, it may have been zone permitted, but it wouldn't have been the right use for it. And I think this is becoming the ninety-foot pyramid as it grows and expands. And so consideration ought to be given to the neighbors that there be no noise after nine o'clock. That doesn't mean you, you shut down at nine, because it takes time for people to get out. And if you live across the street, as a family does, it's disturbing. So the noise is an issue, and you can understand the crowds coming out are in a very lively disposition. I mean, it's happy times. So that's just an observation, and the question also comes up, is tour buses to come and see the facility where these prominent celebrities have recorded. I don't think that necessarily has materialized, but it was suggested early on. We do suggest that maybe the people that come to perform don't always come in individual vehicles. So I hope that the commission will take this into consideration in reviewing this application for the major home occupation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sandberg.
Will you sign in, please?
Thanks.
My name is Jana Garrett, and I live a little over a block away from the Brunsons. And I have been concerned over time, seeing the, the activities that have gone on, in particular, the cars that are around the home and the traffic. But I have not gone to complain to Gainer. It, it's hard for me to confront my neighbors. There's something going on at their house that I don't like, I, I try to just tolerate it, and I look to the zoning in the city to protect me. And when I live in a residential neighborhood, a single-family neighborhood, I, I'm there because that's, that's the type of neighborhood I want to live in. We've had to be vigilant in our neighborhood in the past with student rentals and with other businesses. And we've done so, even if we're uncomfortable doing it with our neighbors whom we love, because having a single-family resident, residential neighborhood is very, very important to us. And it's important to me personally. The first thing I thought of when I, I heard this was happening was, once again, as John Marshall mentioned, the, the nose of the camel in the tent, and allowing for someone to have their business licensed in their neighborhood. Might then set a precedence for others in the future, and it would change our, our neighborhood, and I'm concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett.
Hi there, my name's Robin Philet. I live now at seven-thirty-four East, twenty-seven-thirty North, about two blocks from Gainer, but for many years, I lived about two houses away from Gainer. I was on the twenty-six-twenty Street. So I've got some comments for you. I think that, that some of these concerns might be exaggerated, at least in my opinion. I walk at night often, sometimes I'll take my dogs, sometimes I don't. And just to give you a sense and a flavor of the environment around Gainer's house, I've been by his house many, many times, multiple times a week, and often at night. I've never, ever found somebody throwing beer cans. You know, I've, I've gone, you know, other venues. I don't really go to concerts, but I've at least been by him, driving by. And it's, I, I know the typical mood there. With Gainer's folks, though, there's no alcohol, there's no smoking, I've never heard profanity. People are very considerate, so just to give you a sense here, it's not some sort of free-for-all outside. In fact, I've driven my cars by, and people are slow, people are very considerate. I disagree greatly with the whole notion of this camel's nose under the tent, which I do not believe applies here. I think that's sensationalism. Obviously, any business has got to come with you. If you were to follow that, if I was to give a donation to a street person on a corner, pretty soon they'd all start lining up, and everybody in the community would have to give donations, et cetera, et cetera. Let me just say that I don't think that applies. In my experience, it's a very nice residence, I love what they do. As a neighbor, all of their customers, their clients are very considerate. Quite frankly, I was excited to hear about, and occasionally I've gone to listen, the fact that various choirs come in to perform. And it might be above my pay grade to discuss the merits of what a customer means. But I would think the customer would mean a performing group. So I personally would vote for that redefined, or that, let me articulate that a little better. I would vote for the definition of customer to be refined as a performing group, whether it's an individual or a choir. So that's all I have for you, is just a few positive noise, noises from a neighbor that I'm very content to be there, and I truly hope that he can continue. And from what I understand now, given the limitations that are being placed, he will be toning down the business from what he had been doing previously. So if I follow this correctly, we're here to comment on whether or not that should be further restricted. And my views would be, no, it should not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Philet.
My name is David Wright, I live at twenty-five forty-eight North, ten sixty East in Provo. I am three houses south and across the street from the Brunson property. I would like to address some of the things about the camel and exaggeration. We had a meeting, a neighborhood meeting in two thousand and ten at Centennial Middle School about this event. And we were told what the zoning would entail. We were told that there would be no more than two customers per hour, and that the business should not alter the residential character of the neighborhood. Well, what, what has happened? We had, on June twentieth, twenty-seventeen, there were thirty-six cars parked on the street surrounding the studio about seven PM. And studio patrons were yelling and playing basketball after eleven PM. They're not saying swear words or anything, but they're making noise. There were four cars parked outside the east entrance of the studio on June twenty-first. June twenty-second, twenty-seventeen, there were seventeen cars parked outside the city, studio. June twenty-seventh, four cars parked outside during the daytime, six cars parked outside in the evening. That's not a big problem, four or six, but it's still the camel's nose in the tent, it's more than supposed to be there. June eighth, twelve cars parked. June 8th, 12 cars parked. June 29th, four cars parked outside during the day, over a dozen cars parked tonight. June 2nd, 2017, there was an advertised fireside. There were 18 cars attributed to the studio. And August 7th, 2017, as Neighborhood Chair, I was contacted by a police officer, I believe his name was Sean, who called me and said to me that he had talked to a zoning officer, whose name I think was Reeves, and the city attorney. The officer told me that they all agreed that a singing group of 25 counts as one customer. This was part of the problem, and this is why the city has worked recently to change... I don't think the code's been changed, I think it's been clarified, because there were loopholes like this in it that allowed many people to come. And I read another, on July 20th, there were 16 cars parked around the studios of 2017. March 29th, 2018, 10 cars parked around the studio. I haven't kept a log of all the things that have happened. But first, one question I would like to ask you, has anyone looked at the property to make sure that the 49% is being honored? Because it seems to me, if you have a garage that is full, and you're not using the garage, maybe it's being used for the studio as well. And so that ought to be looked at. And I just think that there have been a lot of disappointment in the city in the way that they enforced what we were promised when this originally happened. And, you know, if it could have go down to absolutely six, and no more ever, maybe that would be okay. But, you know, I have no confidence that that's going to happen. That's my problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
My name is Patricia Smith, and my family, we've done some recording at Gainer's studio. I've done some other recording at other homes in Provo that have a studio attached to their home, and I'm thinking about this six-person limit. I'm like, I have six children that sing, and then if it's my husband and I were there with them, plus we have the person that's videoing and somebody that's engineering, you have more than six. And sometimes my family sings, and there's 12 of us, and we haven't had any problems going to someone else's home that has a studio on their home to do this type of work. And I just think, I can see, I think Gainer can see that the big events maybe are causing problems, but I really am worried about this six limit, like six customers. I'm like, how do you count? Even if I had my, the cars that come from my house and my family, there might be five cars. So I just think that Gainer's place is doing some great work to try to even get my family recorded. I called like three other studios, two or three other studios here in Provo, and they were all booked. And so I'm like, "Gainer, can I record at your place?" And he said, "Well, I've got this hearing, and now you've postponed it till Monday." And I'm like, "Man, that's his livelihood that he's losing out on from day to day of people coming to record with probably..." Usually, recording studio sessions don't take all afternoon and into the evening, they're maybe two hours. And I really see the value of limiting the time, and nine o'clock is very reasonable. And I think Gainer's willing to work with the city and the neighborhood in making the limits, keeping the limits, but I just don't want it to be too limited that he can't really function as a recording business that's really actually needed in our community, and for... Music is food for our souls, and I think he's doing a good job. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
My name's Marcus Smith, and I don't think in terms of code very often, but I do think in terms of neighbors. And I think that neighbors should be maximally accommodating of their neighbors, and I understand that the code is meant to kind of find the line of demarcation as to what is permissible and what is not. The code conditions, as specified in the code, are meant to fulfill certain aims that are specified upfront, which are the health and the safety and the general welfare of the community. And then I'll just give one example of particular, a particular condition that is meant to serve the purpose of our health and our safety and our general welfare. Apparently, disturbing the peace and the quiet of the neighborhood is an important condition, but there is a double standard. If for business purposes, a person can make no noise and be resented by neighbors, when every weekend for eight hours, there's a constant din of lawn mowers and leaf blowers that are disturbing my peace, but they're not making money. So I'm speaking out of place, because I understand this is about business and the regulation of business in neighborhoods. I understand that. As far as numbers of vehicles and the safety of our children crossing the streets, there are church and social events aplenty in our neighborhood that happen with great regularity. 12 houses down the road from me is a man who serves as a bishop in an LDS community, and on a regular basis, there can be 25 vehicles, regular, it's relative, maybe four times a year. But it's not a business activity. There could be a missionary homecoming, and people can come together, and neighbors will not complain. But as soon as somebody is engaged in a business venture, it becomes a place to be less neighborly than we should be. I vote for being maximally neighborly, particularly when it comes to somebody's livelihood. I live near the Brunsons. I have not been there day and night, but I have seen sincere expressions of his desire to come into compliance and meet the regulations of the code. And I think that it would be a neighborly thing to see a genuine spirit in his offer to come into compliance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
My name is Teresa Garcia, and I live three houses down on 2620. And I was surprised when this came up, because I lived there 15 years, and it was, I moved there before he built his studio. So, you know, I know that when he built it, it was approved, and everything was fine. And I don't understand why now it's an issue, and why he's being asked, you know, to make all these changes, and spend money, or whatever it's going to impact, however it's going to impact them adversely. I don't have any complaints about his business. I walk around there a lot with my grandson. You know, I have other issues that bother me more, like, I mean, we're close to the BYU stadium, and I can hear the games from my house. I mean, that, what can you do? Shut down the stadium? Move it away? Come on. It comes with territory, you know, and, you know, parking too, for the games, it's inching closer and closer to where we are. It's down at the, a block away at the temple, you know? So we have those inconveniences, but we embrace them because, you know, we love, you know, the BYU school, and the MTC, and the temple. We're surrounded by all these businesses or other, you know, locations that are not single homes. And, you know, my street, 2620, there's no sidewalk, somebody mentioned that. Rock Canyon is just up the street. During the summer, and even the winter, there's people parking all the way down too, because they're going to the park. So there's that inconvenience, but, you know, I'm not going to say people don't park here. Go ahead, enjoy the park, it's for everybody, you know? It's part of our neighborhood, let's embrace it, whatever comes with it, you know, the parking, you know, there's no sidewalks, people have to walk up the park on the street. That should be a better, more concern for us than the studio, I think, things like that, that we can improve, you know, and, but not to push people away, but to welcome them and make them, you know, and enjoy our neighborhood, because we enjoy it. I've been to some of the events at Gainer's, my daughters have been there too, and I just feel like it's a great asset, and if, you know, if he's trying to comply and do whatever it needs to make it right by everybody, let's embrace that, because he is part of our neighborhood, and he's been our neighbor for many years, and he's been a good neighbor.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
My name's Derek Hanson, I live about a block away, 930 East. I see Gainer's studio as a real asset to our community, and I'm thrilled that it's right where it is, and not somewhere far away in a commercial district. I'll give you two examples of just, you know, kind of recent things. One, I'm our scout master. We needed to visit somewhere, we walked down the street and visited, Gainer gave a great tour to our scouts and showed them all around, and I've seen him do similar things for others. Another example of why it's nice to have there, I had a friend whose son was interested in learning about, you know, creating films and audio and all of this, and I introduced him to Gainer. He was a Tim View student, and he could easily ride his bike to the location, and he worked with Gainer for a while, and ended up getting, you know, into college partly because of his experience. And I see that as a real asset for specifically being where it is. I also walk my dog all the time by there, it's very rare that there's problems, and I agree, like, I, sometimes I wonder how he makes a living, because I feel like there's hardly anyone there most of the time. Now, I realize there have been, sometimes, and it's clear that he's willing to adjust those things, and I think he's done that when people have brought things to his attention. So I'm very supportive of keeping it right where it is, because it benefits our community greatly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenson.
Hello, I'm Ken Crook, founder of InsideSales.com, here in Provo, and one of Gainer's business-to-business When I heard he had a violation of a 40-person choir out front once, making some noise, I said, "Gainer, you probably ought to change that." And then I heard a bagpipe, I said, "You probably ought to change that one too, that's like a war instrument." But he and I have been working together to help him change his business. And he's made huge strides in doing that. The hottest area for growth right now is recording audiobooks, and that's one person, one time. I noticed that all of these incidents, was when he was under the understanding that one client was an entity as in a choir. I've seen him make those adjustments, and now we have John Bytheway come in and do a single book, or we have Victor Ludlow, or we have David J. Ridges, and as mentioned, Gainer has made a huge shift to moving in a direction according to the guidelines. I've watched him be deeply concerned with the feedback, walk outside and make sure if someone's parking on the other side of the street especially, they leave, and that he honors what he's been asked to do. I've been watching him now for about seven months, so I believe strongly, as mentioned, that it's been a huge asset, and I've seen him do his very best to honor the commitments that have been made, when they've been clarified, and they've now been clarified, and I feel strongly that he'll abide by them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crook.
My name is Julie Lloyd. I live at 1132 East, 2500 North, that's about a block and a half away from the Brunson residence. I pass it on a daily basis. My husband was born and raised here in Provo, I was not, and when we got married and then we moved here, he turned to me one day and he said, "Isn't Provo a pretty little town?" And I said, "What? Are you kidding me? Explain that to me." And he said, "Well, the mountains and the lake, and isn't it just beautiful?" I said, "Oh, the mountains and the lake, they are beautiful, but the town, the zoning is nuts." We've lived in Boston, we've lived in Chicago, where zoning codes are adhered to. I said, "And Provo, it's, you go down Center Street, and there's a beautiful old home with an apartment building right in the front yard. What, who made that decision?" I guess my question is, why do we have zoning laws in this town? I don't know why. Because they don't seem to be followed. There are very few, when I came to BYU, the tree streets were a mess, because students were allowed to rent up there, now they've taken those, that neighborhood back. I just don't understand why it doesn't benefit the Brunsons to be able to grow their business in an area where there's parking, and where there's, where it's allowed, rather than having this business right in the middle of, right smack in the middle of a single-family residential neighborhood. It doesn't make any sense to me. Nobody is disputing the fact that the Brunsons do, are talented people and do wonderful things in their studio. That is irrelevant. What this comes down to is, do we have zoning codes for a reason, or not? Apparently not.
Thank you, Ms. Lloyd.
First I want to say I'm scared to death. I'm not a speaker, I'm a singer. I'm very sad.
Could you please state your name for the record?
My name is Deborah Bonner.
Thank you.
And I'm very sad, because we've been with Gainer for almost three years. If it wasn't for Gainer, our choir wouldn't be, we wouldn't be helping so many people in Utah through our music. But all that came to halt, but I'm very grateful that our choir was able to grow and record, and do great things for the community and for lives. And I would say, he must be following the codes, because our choir, we don't want to have a home anymore, and we have to find another way. But I still go and record solo, or I have two people come in and record at a time. And, I mean, I love Gainer, and Gainer loves the choir, and he loves me, and I know if he's doing that with me, I'm sure he's doing that with a lot of other people. And, I don't know, I want to say, there must be something about the spirit of the law here, you know, should be considered somehow. He brings so much joy to the community, I think, to the community, because of what it embodies, and who he is, and the kind, sweet spirit he is. And, but he has definitely been, I guess, in compliance with our, with us anyway, the choir. And so I, I hope that those who, I don't, I don't quite understand their feelings, but I, I hope that they will think about it, think about it, a little bit, and look at, if he is in compliance, if there's any way, and you're seeing that he's in compliance, I'm sure he will be, because he definitely has been with us.
Thank you, Ms. Bonner. Please sign the sign-in sheet for us. Thank you. Are there any other members of the community who would like to speak to this item?
I have 29 seconds left, may I possibly?
You may. I think there's a gentleman.
I've lived across the street from these people for about 20-some years.
Could you please state your name for the record, sir?
My name for the record is Bill Keller.
Thank you.
Doesn't change how long I've lived there. I regret that I've never heard music coming from the studio. I have heard BYU football game, people shouting and the band playing. I've never complained about that. I walk up the street with no sidewalks almost daily past the studio. I have no complaints about it. I don't understand. I live in a beautiful neighborhood. Somebody's mentioned the parks and the lake and the mountains and the temple and BYU. They're still there. It's still a beautiful place to live. I have eight children. I hope they don't all come to my house on Sunday because you guys will probably arrest them. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
Marcus Smith again. I, I was not being facetious about lawn mowers. The vehicles that come to the Brunson residence have catalytic converters as well. The lawn mowers are notorious for spewing noxious fumes. We have an air quality issue that is not being addressed, but we're worked into a dither on this. I just feel that the, the health and safety issue, it's not just noise for lawn mowers, it's also air quality and the Brunsons aren't giving us bad air quality like the lawn mowers do.
Thank you. Are there any more members of the public who would like to speak to this item? Sir?
My name is Francis Rogers. I live about three blocks from the Brunsons and just sitting here listening to this, I think to myself, out of all the people I know in our neighborhood, there are so many people who are getting extra income that I think to myself, who are we going to pick on next? I mean, if, if the Brunsons are willing to live under this arrangement that you've talked about, I think that's wonderful. And they've, you know, there's been a lot of good things said about what good they do in the community, but I'm not going to start calling Provo City every time construction vehicles park on my street because they're involved with the family business. Are we going to complain about the UPS trucks dropping off things for people who are working at home, parking in front of my house and picking things down the street? It just seems like if we really want to, we can pick on anybody we want. But let's, let's be kind. Let's, if a person's willing to bend, let's give them the chance to bend. There's certainly a lot of people that could look awfully bad if we put them in the same situation that we put the Brunsons and I would hate to see us become a community of complainers that are constantly looking at our neighbors and finding fault. They're willing to change, let's let them change.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. All right. At this time, I think we'll close the hearing to public comment and I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward and address any of those concerns he heard expressed by the public.
Again, thank you very much for your time and this opportunity. I know we've taken a lot of time and I want to thank everyone that's come here, even just volunteered to come here and support me. It's just mind, it's mind-blowing. I didn't think I was a nice guy. I mean, my wife tells me that I'm not a nice guy. So she probably thinks that they've been fooled. No, she does, right? Is that Rachel, you think I'm a nice guy? So these concerns, let me just start with the top here. A violation of codes. We haven't been in violation of codes. According to the records, there's only been two violations. I, I addressed that. The trumpets, as far as the trumpets are concerned, that was brought up. Yes, we've always had a problem with playing trumpets. The neighbors complain. That's been a, a really tough deal. We would, my brothers and I would practice at a church house. We'd get kicked out. We'd go to BYU practice rooms, get kicked out. I would move from neighborhood to neighborhood. When we got on with Liberace, we toured with him, there was no place to practice. We would practice in the hotel room with our trumpets in the pillows. You can't get a place to practice in the hotel. Next to us was Shaney Wallace from the movie Oliver, famous person, and this is like 11 o'clock during the day. She should have been up. She complains to the hotel to tell us to, you know, stop practicing. So yeah, practicing trumpets is very, very, very difficult. And that's one of the benefits of the studio that I, the reason I built it is like, oh my gosh, here's a chance we can practice with the band and no one's going to hear it from the outside. Okay, vehicles to bring materials in. It's all, excuse me, it's all set up. Everything's dialed in. That's what's great about it. You can't do a fireside like that without it costing a lot of money. You can't build a studio like that without it costing a lot of money. We had a studio in Hollywood. The overhead was $30,000 a month. If you miss two days of recording, you're going under. You go bankrupt. You get in trouble. You lose your home. You lose everything you got. Building a studio like that cannot be done. It's not done. You don't see it done because it's expensive and it's crazy business. You don't make money in recording studio business. I didn't do it to get rich. You look at studios around and it's a tough job. You're in that chair. You're working your tail off and it's not the job to make a lot of money. I could not build that studio anywhere else. The only way I could build it was to build it there on that property, that size. If I don't get this permit, I will have to sell it and I will never build, build a studio like that again. It'll be over with. I will have to move and downsize big time and I'll have to move next to neighbors. They'll probably complain about my trumpet playing. Brunson Brothers won't have really a place to practice. I love the neighborhood, so we will be out. When Rachel Luke first was talking to my wife, she says, "You guys need to go. You guys need to go somewhere." So why can't you just build that studio somewhere else? And people don't want you here. She made us feel like that the neighborhood was against us. And then we started getting letters that blew my mind because I thought everyone was against us. I thought basically we, they've been against us our, our whole lives pretty much, you know, as that person mentioned. We're just chased from house to house and there have been some great people. We, to hear these people just make these comments, it's just unbelievable. I didn't know I had these kind of friends and look, they're here today to support me. This is mind-boggling. This increases my testimony of mankind. These guys are just amazing. I thank God for this opportunity because I, for the first time in my life, I feel like I have some gratefully true friends that are just coming forth for me here. So this isn't an, an issue of build a studio somewhere else. It's an issue of, no, I'm done. If I'm down to two customers, I sell the studio and I'm going to tell you who's going to move in. Someone's going to move in and they're not going to get a permit and they'll be able to do whatever they want, have parties, whatever. Now, I guess the only thing people can do is call the police on them. And will that be an advantage for the neighborhood? So.
Mr. Brunson, excuse me. I appreciate your frustration and, and your concern. Could you really just address the issues that the neighborhood members?
John Marshall says, talking, says, you know, John Marshall was, you know, talking about the code of violation. Yeah, we want to get that in line. We never, let's see. Maureen Lepre says that we applied for a permit at the time she was the chair, the neighborhood chair. She wasn't at that time. It was Sid Sandberg and he came tonight. He lives in a whole nother neighborhood. The cars, sidewalks, 2620 North is the most dangerous street. Cars go down there 40, 50 miles an hour. We live on that street. The street that the studio's on is calm. When cars are there, they're drive out slowly, but that traffic down that street is very dangerous. So if anyone should be concerned about safety, it should be the 2620 North. That is, we would like to have a stop sign there actually. So if anyone is concerned about safety, that street is very, very busy. The church is just a block down. David Wright, he only spoke, he's concerned, but the church house is right next to him. Cars are always coming past our house. They're turning and come past our house constantly. They park in front of our house when there's a funeral, when there's excess people. So that's that concern. So, let's see. So, yeah, so David Wright, let's see. Patricia Smith, she's great. All these people are great, supporting me. Basically, I, I just appreciate being here and you guys' time and I appreciate everyone here, here and the support. And any more questions, I'll try to address those as quickly as possible.
Commissioners, any additional questions? I don't see any. Thank you.
Hey, I want to thank you guys very much for this.
Thanks. All right. I will turn the discussion back over to the commissioners for discussion, comments, motions, any clarifications with staff.
I think it's very appropriate to be as sensitive as you can be when you're dealing with issues that impact families and their livelihood and investments that they've made in property and that sort of a thing. At the same time, the law is simple. It's not complicated. The rules are very straightforward and based on what we've heard tonight, it sounds like it cuts both ways to me. If somebody meets the criteria that are, that's spelled out in the code, they get a conditional use permit, you know, aside maybe from also meeting any conditions that the planning commission imposes. If they fail to meet those criteria, they don't. It's that simple. The only thing that really seems to be a question to me at all, right, we've talked about this 49%, it's amazing that sometimes things come down to this super narrow margin and I think that's maybe unfortunate, but again, the law is what it is. I'm not necessarily inclined to recommend, well, rather to, to move maybe, that this be approved tonight, you know, for fear maybe of putting staff on their heels relative to trying to, to deal with something that might not comply. So I guess my inclination is to talk about continuing this so that staff can simply check whether or not that provision's met. That's the only thing that I can see that really comes into play. You know, somebody, I think accurately pointed out that, you know, maybe the only question that is before the commission is whether or not additional conditions or more stringent requirements need to be placed on the business to try to mitigate some impact. Personally, I don't think that's necessary. But at the same time, I certainly want to acknowledge that I don't think, based on what we've seen today, that we're dealing with, you know, a camel that's maybe going to get its nose in the tent or that's had its nose in the tent. It looks to me like there have been tin camels in the tent at different times and that we're not talking about insignificant violations of some rules that Provo has that frankly, I think are really liberal, allowing for up to six patrons out of home occupation at one point in time, in my opinion.
That's a lot.
Is a really, really lenient requirement for a business in a neighborhood. And, you know, if those conditions can't be met again, simply, you know, permits aren't issued or enforcement actions taken. But I guess that's my thought is, we let staff sort out whether or not, you know, with certainty, things comply and we talk about it again in the next meeting and I think it's really straightforward.
Thank you. I have questions for staff. My first question concerns a square footage issue and I would just like to better understand the process for verifying that the square footage is compliant with a major home occupation.
Yeah, I think in this case, the staff should go out and take actual measurements.
Okay, that's a, that's a good solution to that question. My second question is, it appears that he has had a minor home occupation permit in the past and violated the code and by the staff report, that was six violations. Is there, once a conditional use permit is granted, if there are repeated violations, is there process wherein that conditional use permit may be revoked? And how does that occur?
So there's a section in chapter 1441 that speaks to that, that the planning commission, upon application by staff and being noticed, put it on agenda, can revoke a conditional use permit by reason of violations.
So it comes back before you in a public meeting?
And are those violations necessarily reported by the public, by periodic checks? You mentioned advance notice of special events.
Typically, our zoning enforcement does go off complaints only, but there are special circumstances where different measures are taken.
That answers those questions. Thank you. Ms. Ellsworth.
Is there some kind of sunset provision for a conditional use permit? Like, if this property were to change ownership, the conditional use permit would not then be valid with the new owner?
No, it runs with the land. So if you sold to another person, they could do the same thing.
All right, commissioners.
I don't know where this is going to go, but I'm going to go ahead and move that we continue the proposed conditional use permit request simply for staff to verify whether or not the applicant complies with the requirement that no more than 49% of the structure be dedicated to the home occupation.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Ms. Ellsworth and I'll just restate it. Mr. Anderson is recommending that item one, or has made the motion that item one be continued until staff can verify whether the square footage complies with the regulations. Is that correct? All those in favor of continuing this item?
Sorry, who seconded? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Shannon. All those in favor of continuing item one?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Right. So it is continued until staff can verify square footage. And since we're running a bit late tonight, we're going to take a five-minute break for the commissioners. Just one moment.
Before you leave that item, how about continuing it to a date specific?
Yeah, I would anticipate that in, next meeting's in two weeks.
Yes.
Or do we have a, it seems like, right, that should be plenty of time.
28th.
So that, that's my thought.
All right. So we'll continue it to the 28th of November. Brief, brief break for five minutes. five minutes.
I misread this agenda. I...
All right, we are back in session. Thank you for your patience. And I will read in now item two and item three. They're related. Item two, Gordon Livingston requests a zone change from R110 to low-density residential, LDR, for 2.94 acres of land located at approximately 1080 east, 1320 south, for facilitate, to facilitate, a 44-unit townhome development. This is in the Spring Creek neighborhood. And related to that is item three. Gordon Livingston requests concept plan approval for a 44-unit townhome development on 2.94 acres located at approximately 1080 east, 1320 south, in the proposed low-density residential zone, Spring Creek neighborhood. And Mr. Ardmore will present items two and three.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so here, to give you some context, uh, we've got South State Street. Uh, the trailer home park is here. Uh, this is 1320 south, uh, to where it's built to so far. Um, that's actually one of the issues here is the, the completion of the roads to access the development. Uh, but I'll get to that. So the applicants have proposed this. Uh, currently, it's in the R110 zone, which was kind of a holding zone for this type of development anyway. Uh, the neighborhood plan for this area envisions this as a low-density residential zone. Uh, R110 was never the intent here. Um, so they've submitted a project that would, as far as we could tell, um, it is a concept plan, but as far as we can tell, the concept would meet the LDR standards, uh, in its density, in its open space, in its parking, um, and in its, uh, its building elevations fronting to the street and all of that. Uh, if we move forward here, you could see the, the zoning map. Like I said, it's R110, which is just kind of a hole so the council could see everything that happens here. Um, the general plan calls for mixed use, but more specifically in the neighborhood plan, it calls for LDR on this specific property. Here's a, kind of a zoom in of the concept. Uh, you've got 44 townhomes. Uh, the applicant has been very, uh, good to work with. We've kind of worked on the site plan through the CRC process to get it to this point where, uh, we've got street front, fronting doors here on that 1080 east that will run down from, uh, the new Provo City Park down to 1320 south. Um, there's still some question with alignment of 1320 south, whether that's going to go straight or where it's going to curve. So that's going to be worked on with engineering. Um, that could affect these units. Um, right now, their entry and their garage are just fronted on this private street. Uh, and then you've got kind of a general lot, or a centralized amenity space with a playground, pickleball. Again, concept, but, uh, it, it would meet the amenity space of requirement of the LDR zone. Uh, here's some conceptual elevations. You've got two different types. Uh, the street-facing units that are alley-loaded for the garages are here, and then the garage facing, uh, private streets would be this unit, uh, just colored rendering. And that is it for my slides. Um, so we recommend approval on the zone. We recommend approval on the concept plan. We feel that it's, it's a good plan. It definitely meets the intent of the zone. It meets the intent of this area of the city, uh, would provide a, a housing type that I think, uh, that we think is needed in the city, uh, kind of that, that middle, that missing middle. Um, and I'll have, I'll take any questions that you have on it.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ardmore? Mr. Knetz?
Aaron, how large are the units? What's the square footage?
They're 1,500 square feet.
1,500, okay.
Three bedrooms, two half-bath.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Ms. Ellsworth?
Can you tell us about the adjacent zones?
So, uh, to the north, you've got the RM zone, which is Mobile Home Park Zone. Um, that's been there for a long time. It may be there for a long time in the future. PF Zone, so that's the new park. Uh, down here, it's also R110, but we do have interest, uh, in this area. We've, we have current plans for additional LDR projects, uh, in this area coming out 1320 south. Bill, you want to add to that?
This is a city-owned parcel, not a substation, is it not?
Correct.
And then just across the street here is a row of townhomes that y'all approved the zoning on for Georgetown Development a few years, uh, a few months ago. This area to the south has been zoned R110, but the anticipation of this whole area is for MDR zoning, uh, under the recently adopted neighborhood plan.
Okay. Could you just explain a little bit more about the road network? You said that they're going to be completing those streets?
So that is a remaining comment through the CRC review, is that engineering, um, we talked with them to, usually when CRC hasn't all approved, we don't take it to you guys yet. Um, but we felt that to give the applicants kind of an answer on the zone to see if they should move forward, let's take it. Um, but it is still a CRC comment of, we need to work out this road network before we're going to approve any kind of grading permits, anything like that. And, and that's in the works. I think that'll be done before we get to that point.
Okay, great. So it's in process?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Ms. Ellsworth?
So the, just to clarify, the city owns from the substation up to, up to the park?
No. So there's, there's properties in between. So ten, that, that road will run through here. So we own that, and we own the park up here. Uh, but this is privately owned.
And what's that zone?
Uh, it's a Prozone, uh, that was approved a couple, few years back now. Uh, just never got off the ground. It might, it might still, but...
That was a townhome development, though, wasn't it?
That's correct. Townhomes.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. If there are no other questions from the commissioners for staff, I would like to invite the applicant, Mr. Livingston.
Hi, my name is Gordon Livingston, and this is my brother Ryan Livingston. Uh, we've been developer builders for approximately 25 years. We specialize in townhome condominium type. We do have another job. Uh, we are firefighters. I work for Orem, and he works for West Valley. So it's kind of a part-time venture thing. Um, anyway, we specialize in just, uh, like I said, townhome condominium type, but we do like to spice them up a little bit, make them look a little nicer. Uh, we've already met with the neighborhood representative, Mary, and, and gone over what she would like to see in that area. And so, like Aaron said, we've tried to work really hard and diligent in making sure that it fits what Provo perceives.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. and Mr. Livingston? Ms. Ellsworth?
Um, what will you do to mitigate the noise adjacent to the railroad tracks?
Next to the railroad tracks, there's going to be a, a future road. So there'll be the train tracks, a road, and then our project, and we'll just have a fence built.
Okay. Will it be like a sound barrier, or...?
It'll be a concrete fence.
Do you know how high?
Um, six feet.
Okay.
Not high enough for sound, for a train?
No. You know, we've built another project with a similar, uh, railroad track adjacent. It's hard to mitigate that, you know, but hopefully we can, the best we can.
And then, um, who do you anticipate is the target market for this kind of unit?
Um, just, uh, small families and, uh, single professionals. Um, that's what we've targeted in the past, and I think that's a good, good market.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right, I'd like to invite the neighborhood chair for the Spring Creek neighborhood to come forward and comment on the item two and three.
Mary Miller, Spring Creek Neighborhood Chair. Um, we're actually excited about this. We, uh, put all we had at the time in February in front of our neighborhood, and there didn't seem to be any concerns at that point. Um, as I have had communication with, um, uh, community development, um, I've learned that they've worked quite well to bring this to a product that will enhance the neighborhood and be a great asset. And, um, the, the bottom line is this, we don't have the housing stock we need here in Provo. The population is coming. Um, most of the contractors in the area, even in Salt Lake, cannot keep up with the demand for housing. This is a, I wondered what would ever become of that piece of property because it's so far back there. And, you know, here we have someone who's willing to take on that challenge, make it beautiful, make it an asset to our neighborhood. So, um, it's, it, it's fallen right into place with the general plan as well as the southeast area plan. What more could we ask for? That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any other neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to items two and three? If not, are there any members of the public who would speak to items two or three? Please come forward and state your name, and there's a sign-in sheet after you've spoken.
I'm Steve Turley. I've been here, uh, talking to you not too long ago about the property immediately to the south. Uh, you'll see that arrow that has the phase one and phase two. I'm wondering, is there, I don't want to impose on staff, but is there, is there a way you can bring up the city's GIS, uh, aerial from that, that, and I'm, and I'm hoping you can bring up the, the master street plan overlay on that. The reason I, the reason I mention this is, I, it's a great, I think, I think this is exactly what, uh, good development is all about, is following the plans. And, uh, and this is, is, is part of that, uh, southeast neighborhood's master plan. They're doing exactly what they're supposed to do. I think the product is, is right. My, my, my concern is, is that road layout right there. That's the adopted master street plan for the city. And, uh, and you don't see that that dashed green line, thank you by the way, that comes off of 1320 south, um, uh, is in the same configuration that has been, that the staff has asked for and that the CRC has asked for on this, um, uh, in this particular area. So the, the master street plan is to, is to give guidance to people like me, uh, 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 give guidance to people like the Livingstons, uh, so that we, we know how to, how to plan, how to make prudent choices, how to make prudent development. And that, that alignment of that road, which has been the roadmap, um, for years, um, is not what the city staff is asking to happen now. There, you'll notice on the, uh, where it says 1270 south, that street, if you go to the parcel to the south, that's the Livingston's parcel. And, uh, and the city staff has asked for a road to go in on the west side immediately adjacent to those railroad tracks. And so the, the plan that's been proposed isn't consistent with the master street plan. And then, uh, what that does is it complicates the development that's been anticipated on my property to the south. So, so while I, I wish, I, I, I want the Livingstons to be able to move forward, I just want the Livingstons to move forward according to the city's plans. Um, so as, if there's any sort of, uh, uh, comments that, that the commissioners are able to make today, I hope those, those comments are consistent with, with supporting, uh, the, the plans that have been in place and that have given guidance to the rest of us. So as far as the plan goes, it's great. Um, the, the units are great. The density's right. The product's right. Um, the roads aren't right. And to move forward with that, uh, complicates things for, for the neighbors, so...
Great. Thank you, Mr. Turley. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak to this item? If not, I will turn it back over to the commissioners for discussion, motion. Uh, would you, Mr. Day, would you be able to clarify, uh, any of Mr. Turley's comments on the road network, the future road alignment? Sorry to put you on the spot.
My name's David Day with Provo City Public Works. Uh, so our master street plans, when the lines are dotted, uh, the intent with that dotted line is, we need a road to get through here somehow. Um, it was never our intent to say exactly where that needs to be with the dotted line. So I guess that would be my response to that. Um, also, this is a concept level plan for a rezone. Um, we, we do a lot of change, you know, from that point on to make sure everything complies with city standards. And, uh, if, if all of the property owners got together and figured out a better solution to the road network there, as long as they met our standards, I think we would support that.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Day? Mr. Ardmore?
If I could add to that. So like you alluded to, this is a reasoned request, which has to be accompanied by a concept plan. Uh, the applicants will still have to come through with, uh, with, with staff on a project plan, a final project plan that gets approved. And, and like David said, things can change on that. What they're really going for right now is the zone, so...
Thank you.
On the road, uh, so the idea, at least the concept of having a road adjacent to the railroad tracks, that could continue north between the, the development to the north and the railroad tracks. There's adequate room for that?
Yep. There was, there was kind of, if you look real close, this property comes out... out and stops here, and then this, the Livingston's comes and stops here. There's this, oh, probably almost 40 feet of property that is kind of unclaimed, and no one really knows where the railroad owns it. It's just an unknown right now, so we thought, well, we might as well utilize that some way to get to the trailer court property if that ever redevelops in the future, so. Says future road, but that may be really future.
So there's not even a part, excuse me.
What's that?
Again, this is kind of a conceptual
Yeah.
stage that things are at, but would you envision this applicant building any part of that, or it's just setting aside the...
No, we, we hadn't required any of that with, with the application.
Ms. Ellsworth.
I'm worried about the noise. I don't think anybody who sleeps is going to want to hear that. But we don't have any ordinance that would create a higher sound wall, do we?
If I could interject, could you bring the aerial back up? So, I'm thinking that's about 70 feet.
Show me again.
So it's, it's a lot further away to that property line than, than these trailers would experience. Not, not that that dampens any of the sound, but it is a fair amount of distance further than any of the other properties along there, so.
Thanks. Yeah, I live up on the bench and I can hear the trains, and I just, yeah, I worry about, I worry about that.
It's just a break in the conversation for a minute. And then you pick right up again where you left off.
Well, if you have young families in there, and they have infants that, you know, wake up because they hear trains, that's pretty inconvenient. If you're an adult and you wake up because you hear trains, that's also inconvenient.
Mr. Ardmore?
Might I say something? As a past home buyer in Provo, looking at available properties in my price range, there are a number of condos adjacent to the train tracks already. And I made that choice that I didn't want to do that. So the builders are making the choice to build that, believing that there will be people that want that, so.
This townhome product is the most affordable thing being built in Provo right now. Everyone who's building these, it absorbs really well because it's the most affordable thing on the market. I lived closer than this to railroad tracks when I first got married, and I had a lot of dreams with trains in them. But otherwise, yeah, you stop the conversation on the phone when the train goes by, and you live with it.
Did you ever get used to it?
Yes, absolutely.
That was my experience, that you get to a point where you don't hear it, which...
You just sleep through it.
Believe it or not, but you just don't hear it.
[inaudible] I raised 12 children there, and none of them were waiting in the middle of the night by anything. It's beautiful, it's truly, if you live there, you know?
Okay.
So it's, it's doable, I'm just saying it's doable.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. All right, commissioners, further discussion, a motion. This is, item two will be a recommendation for the rezoning, and item three will be approval of the site plan.
Staff care if we do them together? One motion, try to be clear, maybe? So just...
One at a time.
Do one at a time, one at a time. Just a quick thought, perfectly appropriate place, I think, for what we're looking at here. Sort of have concerns with the zone change, but relative maybe to the chapter three of the general plan discussion, the housing part, I do have a growing kind of unease that it's just apartments, studio apartments, multifamily housing, and that kind of thing without other housing products to kind of balance it out. And I, even in this neighborhood where I know that density is going to have to be part of redevelopment and stuff like that, just that, that concentration, I think over time might be something that doesn't work out ideally. And I don't know how, yeah, again, given this property situation, properties immediately around it, I don't see anything else making sense, but that's maybe just anecdotal. So on item number two, I move that we recommend that the proposed zone change from R-110 to low-density residential be approved.
All right, so the motion is for item two to be approved for a zone change from R-110 to LDR. Do we have a second for that motion?
I will second it.
Seconded by Mr. Knutson. All those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation to municipal council for item two?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the item two, we'll, we will recommend a, sorry, lost my thought there. We'll forward a positive recommendation on item two to municipal council, and that was unanimous. And then we have item three.
I move that we recommend that item three, the proposed concept plan approval, I apologize, are we, are we the approving body?
We are approving.
We are, okay, so let me restate that. I move that we approve the proposed concept plan for the 44-unit townhome development as referenced as item number three.
And that would be contingent upon the rezoning approval?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Seconded by Mr. Knutson. All those in favor of approving item three, the concept plan for a 44-unit townhome development in the Spring Creek neighborhood, contingent upon zoning, rezoning approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so item three is approved unanimously. Thank you. Right, item four, and this will again be for a recommendation to municipal council, commissioners. Provo City Public Works requests amendments to section 15.03.020 parentheses three to update 2018 standards to 2019 standards. This has citywide impact. And Mr. Yost will present this item.
Thank you. You previously heard this item two weeks ago, and, previously, and since then, David Day has been able to compile a complete set of clean revision, revised standards. Our recommendation upon review is that, essentially because these standards particularly pertain to technical engineering aspects of utility construction and other development standards that end up not really having a substantial impact on the build environment, at least above ground, that because of that, and because the discussion related to street standards and other kind of geometric standards related to street development that, as staff and the planning commission were more acutely interested in, that we're going to deal with that as part of the, hopefully, long and iterative discussion regarding the transportation master plan. Because that's been separated out, staff feels comfortable and recommends that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval on these standards to the municipal council.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Yost? Mr. Anderson?
Just timing on the transportation master plan, maybe a quick update. Are we half of the way through the process now, or more or less?
Yeah, so tomorrow night at the rec center, there's an open house for people to come and give input. I would say that's probably a 30% point in the, in the process, maybe a little further, but it, it's gathering enough data and, and having input and getting it to a point where they can say, this is what we've learned, now what do the planning commissioners think? What do the city council think? We're, we're not, I don't think to that level yet. They're getting close, but we're thinking that in the near future, we'll come to a, a planning commission study session and update you on where they're at and what they've learned so far, so.
You've heard, I mean, what are, some of the commission's concerns have been in the past at least, about street design, street width, all that kind of thing. Is that being discussed?
It, it is. I don't have them with me, but they, they have some really good visual aids of street widths and, and what would be put in those widths with some enhancements. You know, normally in an engineered drawing, you just show the, the hard surface, but these newer drawings that they're coming up with show where houses would be and, and the scale of cars and people. So it, it makes the, kind of the cross-section come to life of what it would really look like. I think they're doing a really good job of putting those visuals together, so. Another update to you also, that's something you've been asking in the past, is updates on the sewer. We have those maps available, but they wanted to present those to you in a study session, I think that's in two weeks. So you'll get a, you know, a personal update on that and know where the problems are and such, so.
Thank you, that's perfect, I appreciate that.
Is there anything you wanted to add on item four?
I can tell you all the changes, but I think we covered most of those last time. There's been like three drawings that have been revised since then, but it was, you know, really technical stuff. You may not be interested, but I could show you those. Otherwise, everything that you've seen so far is still in there, with the exception to three drawings that have been updated, minor changes, so.
Great.
If you'd like to see those, we can, but
Commissioners?
At the time, I can be brief.
I heard technical, I don't need technical.
Okay.
I think we're, we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, are there any neighborhood chairs who would like to speak to item four? Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to item four?
Dave Connect, and I used to be a board member for NeighborWorks, and they're looking at doing a pocket neighborhood. And I'm not sure what kind of street plan they're going to need for that. And we also saw recently with Dave Gardner trying to, well, he did get approved finally at the old jail site, but his street plan where he, I basically think he wanted no parking on one side of the street, a certain size of road that would meet the needs of the community he was building. And I think what I'm trying to say is, as we try to have creative housing options, we have to have perhaps creative roads to suit those options. And I don't know, Dave, do we have one that would not have parking on either side because it's really maybe not needed, or?
Our, our narrowest street width is a 24-foot asphalt width, and, and that, that was a, a width that was come up with by a collaboration between all the departments at the city, and it was kind of a, a fire truck, fire access width, is I think is why that got to be the smallest width, so. I don't know if that gives them what they need, but 24 feet, you know, that goes, you know, a mirror-to-mirror on a pickup truck's probably eight and a half feet, so you still have a little bit of wiggle room to miss each other, but you could probably tighten that up a little bit more, but...
Or you allow parking on one side, something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
My understanding is that the problem in the past hasn't been with a 24-foot width. I think there are a lot of developers and even people trying to do pocket neighborhoods that would say that would fit and it would work. I think the problem has been that the trip generation rate is so low to be able to use that street width that very quickly it becomes not usable for a pocket neighborhood, as soon as you have more than 250 trips on it, or 200 trips. You can't use that width.
Yeah, we, we topped it out at 500, but we're looking at that with the transportation master plan, and we're probably going to, to take that probably more upwards of 1,500 trips, which
Help tremendously.
Would allow
150 homes.
You know, quite a few more homes on a street with
Because we count so many trips per home.
Yeah.
It can't be more than 10.
Daily trips?
Daily trips?
Yeah.
10 per day?
Per
Per day. Per home? Does that sound like that's...
So our
No. Wow.
With our, with our study, we found there's 11.4 trips per home. So if you did the math of 1,500 divided by 11.4, you'd know how many homes could be using that width of a road.
200, I think, is, yeah, that's, wow, it'd be really hard to ever employ that kind of standard if that's the threshold, but 1,500, I'm used to 800 as being...
I think our old one was, well, our old thresholds that we're living with right now, I guess our current thresholds are 250 vehicle trips before you have to have a second access. And then 500 vehicle trips to where you have to go beyond a 24-foot wide road, so. But like I said, we're, we're looking at that and analyzing that and thinking that that can go to, to more trips per day, so.
I certainly appreciate the comment. Yeah, I certainly, and you're probably aware that Provo drew some attention from one of the bigger home builders in the state in some public settings here recently. I was kind of surprised to see somebody be as direct as Clark Ivory was, and I think that's unfortunate for him, but the, you know, as municipalities, we're in the crosshairs of builders that are blaming cities for why homes cost what they do these days. I don't think it's rational, I don't think it's fair, but those standards that we have, they're under the gun now, or...
Yeah, so as, as kind of a response to that, our, our consultant is going to look at all of the municipalities in the area and have a comparison of where we stand with other cities and, and try to see, you know, where that falls out, so, yeah.
Just in my opinion, I think those are steps in the right direction, for sure.
Agreed.
Our, however, our first look at it were about the same as everyone else, so the information that was presented may have been erroneous, so.
Hard to believe that would happen with...
Any other questions for Mr. Day? Were there any other members of the public who would like to speak to item four? Seeing none, I will close it to public comment and turn it back to the commissioners for a motion or further discussion. Ms. Ellsworth?
I'm ready to make a motion. I move that we recommend to the city council approval of the Provo City Public Works Department request for amendments to section 15.15.03.0203 to update the 2018 standards to 2019 standards.
Thank you. Do we have a second for the motion?
I have a second.
Seconded by Mr. Knutson. All those in favor of forwarding a positive All those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation on item four to municipal council?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we will forward a positive recommendation on item four, and that was unanimous. Okay, the last item on our agenda this evening is also for a recommendation to municipal council. Item five, Western Community Crossroads L.C. requests an ordinance text amendment to section 14.34, 350, recreational vehicle storage, including boats, trailers, and recreational vehicles, and towing impound yards to increase buffering requirements when adjacent to a residential zone, and this would have citywide impact.
All right, thank you. So this item, we've heard previously, and it was recommended to be continued to allow staff some time to go back and make some adjustments to staff's proposed ordinance amendment. The applicant requested the ordinance amendment to help increase some setback requirements, fence requirements, things like that, to help buffer these impound yards from some adjacent residential boundaries. And in reviewing that, staff found that there were some inconsistencies with regards to the impound yard ordinance and some of the zones where that ordinance was a conditional use. So part of the staff's proposed amendment goes in there and fixes those inconsistencies. From the last meeting with the planning commission, staff was directed to also go back and have it so that the impound yards could be permitted uses as opposed to conditional uses, as long as there are certain criteria that are met. And so 1434350 has been reviewed and things have been added there to accommodate that request. Another one of the things that was mentioned in the last meeting was the general commercial zone and whether or not impound yards should be there or not. The suggestion was to go ahead and not allow those in that zone to help maintain that zone more for commercial uses, and part of that's due to its proximity to residential neighborhoods. A lot of times, you can see on the map here, the CG zone in red, and its proximity to the yellow, which is the residential zones throughout the city there. So that change has also been made in staff's proposed text amendment, which is attachment one. So I'll kind of just go through attachment one real quick and just kind of touch on some of those changes that we've incorporated there. Some of the zoning, we've added it to the freeway industrial zone, changed it to the permitted use instead of conditional, included some fencing materials, and added a requirement that if the impound yard is adjacent to a residential zone, that a masonry wall be required. Also that there'll be some increased landscaping options and that those landscaped areas are permanently maintained. The applicant, in his request, was for a 200-foot setback as opposed to the current code that had 10 feet. Staff reviewed that as well, and in this proposed amendment, staff's recommendation would be that it's 20 feet, which is an increase from the 10 feet. Another one of the things that was mentioned in the last meeting was to kind of look at tow yards and how many tow companies that they allow within the site. So in the staff report there, we've stated that in the site that's adjacent to a residential zone, only one towing company may operate from the site. And then we've had, the next line there is if it's adjacent, if it's not adjacent to residential zone, it can have up to three companies operate from the site. After considering that a little bit more after the staff report, we feel like that's something we could do away with that section. If a site that's out in an industrial area is, you know, whatever size it is, it can only accommodate so many vehicles to meet the codes, and so we felt like it doesn't necessarily matter how many companies that tow yard gives permission to utilize. They're going to have to kind of regulate that on their own based on the space available that they have to offer. So those are some of the...
So our point on that is if it's out in the middle of an industrial zone, do we really care if it's three operators or five operators or 10 operators? If there's sufficient room for them to operate, and that's that many less we need in other places of the city. So in the middle of an industrial zone, we recommend not having a limitation. That's the number.
So with that change noted, that would be just striking that last line in red in paragraph seven of 1434350. But to keep the one that regulates if it's adjacent to a residential zone, that it's limited to one towing company. And then the rest of that goes into each of the zones, and each zone has a list of permitted and conditional uses, so we went through those, and we just tried to make those consistent, and so, yeah, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions? Any questions for Mr. Wright?
I have one, just easy question. Do we have a city arborist, and do they specify recommended trees? Do they have like a list?
Yeah, we do. We have a city forester, and he has a list that he maintains and makes recommendations or requires certain developments to utilize that.
Thank you.
There are certain trees that are prohibited.
All right, at this time, I'd like to invite the applicant, Western Community Crossroads, to present their item.
Thank you, and thanks to the staff for doing a really good job of trying to reconcile some things that needed a little bit of, well, needed a second look for sure, so.
I know, we all know who you are, but.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Thank you.
I represent Western Community Crossroads today. I do, I do think the overall intent is just to talk about what are compatible uses, and while, while we can build fences between, there are sounds, there are all sorts of issues that can complicate, and this particular use is one that happens at times that may not be compatible with neighbors, with residential neighbors. And so, and I mentioned before when we came here that the night I came back into town was when I drove past the one particular piece of property that is affecting me, and if, go back to the aerial, is that okay? Oh, thank you. It was immediately, you'll see the rectangle white building there towards the right of the middle of the screen. It's that, it's that properties of the north, and while this is a citywide thing, the impact, I own the properties and I'm developing the properties that are immediately to the west and will be right across that line, and there'll be some, there'll be a third story. So a six-foot fence isn't going to help when it comes to looking down into other uses. We realize that. We don't, we can't, we can't change what happens with the neighbors. But the, but as I drove past that late at night, and the lights were going, and the trucks were backing in and out, evidently they had to get, they had to get a car in there, so they had to pull a couple of cars out, and then they had to back a couple more in, and I'm sitting there thinking, really? Is that what's going to happen all night long? And whether it's, whether it's a public service that a wrecked vehicle is going to be there or whether it's a, it's a towing to make sure that students visit their girlfriend where they're supposed to be and not where they're not supposed to be, and that's why their car ends up missing, those are all things that are going to happen most likely at night. So I hope that you understand that this is a, while it's unique to this area here, it's not unique and that it's a citywide problem, and I hope we can address it in the things we're discussing here. The first thing is, and maybe, maybe your comfort level has been satisfied, but to make these things go from conditional to permitted uses is, I think, sends a wrong message. If we just say it's permitted, and there's a few categories, or there's a few, there's a few conditions that are necessary to be met to go in that, I think that we're going to find the lowest common denominator from time to time, and that's what we're trying to avoid. And I'll, I'm going to share what I think is that lowest threshold that these people get across. Without it can do, without making them, or without, with making them permitted uses rather than conditional uses, I mean, you'll never see them again. You'll never get the chance to look at one of these and say, wait a minute, something about that we missed, something about that we overlooked, something about that just doesn't feel right, and yet our code doesn't allow us to prohibit that. So I don't know if it's the best prudent way forward to give up that option right there as a conditional use. Commissioner Jensen, you made a really good comment last time about the buffer. While I suggested 200 feet, and I'll explain why later, 10 feet can be managed, but we get into those bigger spaces, and now we get into wild lands. We get, I mean, what's going to accumulate there? No one's going to be able to do anything in 10 feet or 20 feet, and at some point on the way, I thought, boy, she makes a good point, where if you landscape that really well, that too can become a buffer, not only from sounds, but from visual blight as well. And done right, I think 20 feet can ride that or be that good space. But I want to speak to, I want to speak to the why I said 200, and it was because, quite frankly, I didn't, I didn't know how far it is across the street. And if I am that house that's on the corner across the street, and while that's a, that's a business right now, there was a time when that was a house, they're going to be looking to the west, across State Street, into, into the belly of this impound yard. And our buffering from a residential neighborhood doesn't, is silent about something that's across the street. And so on this South State Street corridor, I went 800 south, 900 south, 960 south, and I went down there, and all those areas along that, in that, on this South State Street corridor, they could have a impound yard across the street from the residential, and while it doesn't back up to the back of the property, it could be across the street from the property. And so I'm saying, wouldn't it be nice if it wasn't, if we didn't have to deal with that? Because as you see, the impound yard that's there, they have complied with this proposed ordinance. They have a chain link fence, and it's opaque. Those are the two requirements. If you flip to this, the 1434350, it says that the, under one, it says that it needs to be an opaque fence or wall, and then you get down to B, which used to be A, but is now B, the proposed thing. It said that the fencing material shall be, and you see the beauty link is gone, so they no longer have to have slats in the chain link fence, but you'll see that that fencing shall be, and then the list starts with chain link. So they have to meet two requirements. It has to be a chain link fence, and it has to be opaque. Well, it doesn't say how it has to be opaque, and so the current occupant of that property there has spread black plastic on the inside of chain link fence, and I can't imagine that's what we want to have happen. So supposedly, that's solved in section C, where it says the masonry wall shall be required if located adjacent to a residential zone. I think we can words, do something with the wording on that, because if I were interpreting that in the most selfish way possible, I would put my masonry wall adjacent to the residential zone, which then would allow the three other sides to be my highly decorative chain link fence with a black tarp spread on the inside of it. So I'm hoping that if the requirement is to have that, that masonry wall shall be required if located adjacent to a residential zone, I hope that's the fence of, is, needs to be masonry on all four sides. So I hope, I hope we can get some clarity, either in the ordinance or from staff on their expectation there. The next thing was, I think there's wisdom in the discussion about one towing company may operating from that site. We're hoping that this is a less impact, and after the comment by Mr. Pepperoni, why not have, or why have a limit to the amount that would be on a, on a single piece of property someplace where it seems more appropriate? That seems, that seems prudent if that were to be struck from there. So anyway, while we need to accommodate all competing uses in the city, I hope that as we, as we fight so hard to preserve residential areas and the revitalization that's going down on State Street is great, but, but as we, as we drive back and forth on State Street, the thousand, tens of thousands of car trips a day, they're going to have to look at whatever, whatever we decide here. So I'm hoping that we can give, your comments can, can help us understand or help the council understand that, that desire to, to increase that buffer from, from not one side, but from all sides, and then to, and to protect those residential uses. So thank you for your time, your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Charlie. Any questions for Mr. Charlie? Thank you. All right, are there any neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to this item?
Mary Miller, Still Spring Creek Neighborhood Chair. I knew what brought this up, brought it to a head in our neighborhood. It is incredibly unsightly. First thing that my husband and I both did, we're on our computers looking for, what does the state say about this? And in the information I found from the state, the yard that is currently there shouldn't be there. They just shouldn't be there. And so my hope is with the clarity that's been put in here, and this, I think, you know, this is, in the conclusions, let's see here, towards having them be permitted uses subject to meeting established criteria. And I think that's the one thing that maybe we need to expand on a bit here tonight. I like the idea of one towing company, there are five in that yard right now that is an absolute eyesore. The state indicates that impound yard should have a solid surface, and that space, it must be large enough so that the cars can be placed next to each other with enough room for each car to open their doors without hitting the car next to it. That is also not the case in this one. So there are some things like that that maybe, and that's what I called about when I, I am that neighborhood chair in your report, and it wasn't questions I had about it, because it's my understanding that if the state has a mandate, that each city looks to that as a guideline, and we need to follow that, you know, and if we want to add a few more things, that's fine. We want to clarify a few more things, but that's what I was asking of community development when I made that phone call. So I think there, you guys have done it before. I witnessed you have marvelous brains and marvelous thought processes, and I think there's a way that we can make this work with some minimal fine tuning on where they can be located and what they should look like. Definitely not, another thing too, in the, in the criteria here, it says it should be maintained weed-free. That is also not the case on State Street. So I think there are things like that, that, you know, we're going to put in the lap of community development again and back to the zoning people, because this is obviously out of compliance, but I think you guys, I think you're, you're well-informed and can add what needs to be added here to just fine tune it a little bit more. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to item five?
Richard Holmes, Provost Neighborhood. I was a member of the committee that planned the southeast neighborhood, a plan that was adopted a year or so ago, and our design or our objective in, part of that plan was to improve the look of State Street, to establish a design corridor with minimum standards so that, it's an entrance to our city. People that drive from the south will drive along State Street, and we wanted it to look nice, and this place does not look nice. And it seems to me that the operator has, is pushing every limit that he possibly can, getting by with the very minimum. And so, while I do think that the proposal from the, from staff is, has some improvements and... that the proposal from the, from staff is, has some improvements, and there are good things there, I don't think it goes far enough. Black plastic on the inside of a fence just doesn't work. And if there is a masonry fence on one side, why not all the sides? If it's sight blight from the residents, then isn't it also from the street and from the other side of the property? I think those are things we need to look at. Like Mary mentioned, there are currently five companies operating out of this site, which is not compliant with the code as I understand it. And I think we can do better. Like I say, this is an entrance to our city. This is what people see, and it shouldn't just look good, it should look great. And I think there's some things that we can do to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Are there any other neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to item five?
Hi, Vicki Connect, Provost South Neighborhood Chair. I can second whatever they said to you as well. My main concern is that this is supposed to be a design corridor, and it just seems like, well, what we're doing is putting storage sheds and things that, you know, are not all that attractive on State Street as an entrance to our city. And I would, a tow truck, tow yard is even worse. I would prefer not to see this at all. But I would also, if it has to go there, which I hope it doesn't, I think that, I wanted to make a comment on the 20-foot setback from the residential area. I have 20 feet between me and my neighbor, you know, and I just can't even think 20 feet is near enough. I'm not necessarily going to agree with Steve with 200 feet, but I'd like to see 40 to 50 feet as far as a setback goes. And also, I would like to see a mason fence all the way around, rather than the rest of it. I'm sorry, I'm tired. I just got through with the 10 kids at my house. So, anyway, my mind is not working. But that's all I have to say. I really would like to see something much nicer going in there. Tow yards, no. Put them off where people can't see them. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Connect. Are there any other neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to this item? Are there any members of the public who would like to speak
Dave Connect. So, question for staff. When you reviewed this, did you also look at the requirements for auto body shops? There's a couple of auto body shops on State Street. One's very close to this, the other's down farther, Dynamic Auto Body. And when you drive by them, you don't see their cars. One has masonry fences, the other has the beauty fence. And I don't see a lot of difference between the cars at an auto body shop. Admittedly, some of them might be wrecked. But I remember last time when Leo Lyons was here advocating for the tow yards, he was like, well, there's no difference between an impound yard and a new car dealership. I would beg to disagree. And, so, yeah, I, did you happen to, are there requirements, different requirements for the auto body shops?
I haven't reviewed the, for an auto body shop. In this review, we looked at the impound yard section of the code, and that doesn't pertain to impound yard, so. So I'm just kind of looking at other uses that are similar on that road. And then in the section where it says the required yards in the underlying zone shall be landscaped with some combination of trees, shrubs, whatever. I don't know if it is necessary, but when I read that, if I was just looking to do a business, you want to know what's expected. And to me, a required yard in the underlying zone misses also the fact there may be a design corridor standard that needs to be adhered to or considered, which is probably going to be stricter than the underlying zone, because you're on that design corridor. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Connect. Any other members of the public who would like to speak to item five? Seeing none, I will close this to public comment and return it back over to the Commissions, Commissioners. Mr. Anderson.
I think I answered my own question, but thank you.
Could I just clarify something before you start to?
Please.
So, in this area of South State Street where Mr. Turley's property is, this is CM zoning. And the CM zone lists these auto wrecking yards as a permitted use right now. They would never come to you. And they would come to you under the regulations that we have right now, which are much less. And they would get approved as a permitted use with much fewer regulations than what the staff is suggesting. I'm not saying there's not room for improvement or adjustment or other things to be made. I'm just trying to put things in perspective.
So, does that mean that these requirements would not, my understanding reading this was that the requirements that you've stipulated would apply to each of these zones as the use applies? Okay.
But these that you're, these that you're looking at are more stringent than what's in our code right now. We're requiring, we're adding regulations and requirements.
Right.
And you're eliminating the use from one zone, or at least that would be?
That's right. This is the commercial, general commercial zone, CG, is the one zone that allows these now, that is adjacent to the most residential zones. If you look at all the CG zones of the city, most of them are right adjacent to residential zones. So we're saying, let's take those off the table, for a lot of the reasons that Mr. Turley's pointed out.
I have a comment on Attachment 1. Paragraph 1, the first page of it, you state, at the, item 1 states that recreational vehicle storage area and towing impound yard shall be screened on all sides by an opaque wall or fence that meets the requirements of this subsection. But then the next, item A stipulates the height. Item B then says fencing material shall be chain link, wood, masonry, or composite. So there's a discrepancy between those two statements. Item 1 is saying masonry, or opaque wall. And I don't think anyone would agree a chain link fence is opaque. So I think I would recommend striking chain link as a material that's suitable. Or maybe add it to vinyl fencing shall, vinyl fencing and chain link fencing shall not be permitted. I think it clearly states in item 1, though, that all sides will be screened by an opaque wall or fence. So that would include the street-facing side along State Street, correct? So I think that takes care of that problem. I might be a little more stringent on the tree types that you want to use for buffering, whether those are evergreen or deciduous. And my only concern about the 20-foot buffer zone between residential and these uses is that a mature tree is going to have a bigger canopy than 20 feet, unless it's a very small deciduous or a very thin columnar form of a evergreen. So for that reason, you might want to stipulate 30 or 40-foot buffer zone. That's pretty common in a lot of jurisdictions, as a buffer zone between uses like this, whether it's commercial and residential, or, you know, a tow yard, semi-industrial kind of use and residential. And you might even go so far as to stipulate the spacing of those trees, you know? Give an example of Leyland Cypress spaced 20 feet on center, or something to that nature. So then you really are creating that visual and auditory screen that's going to grow up and be in place.
A big number of trees and spacing are governed by 1520. Is that right, Dustin? So Section 1520 of the code would address those things that you just suggested.
Perfect.
Which is why they're not also here.
Maybe just a reference to that part of the code? Or I guess it is landscape buffer requirements? I see it. Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Anderson.
Just, I think I know this one, but none of these are going to apply retroactively to any existing use, right? It's all just.
So the current condition along State Street, and there are some very unsightly tow yards and repair shops along State Street, I will agree. Are those enforcement issues currently?
Yeah, I think with some of those, we've got some active zoning enforcement going on, on some of those. So overall, what we're looking at is the ordinance amendment, not necessarily this specific site.
Right.
This is the catalyst to what brought the applicant in tonight, but we're not saying by approving this, we're going to give this product. A lot of these tow yards do have some zoning enforcement, like some of those things that were mentioned today. So, you know, with what was brought up, you could look at the code and say, well, they're not compliant with what this is saying, and it's not the other way around. It's not saying that this code brings this product.
Right. Understood.
To Mr. Connect's question or point, design corridor regulations are in addition to zoning regulations for the underlying property. So this does not trump design corridor regulations. They still have to adhere to those things.
It's an overlay atop.
And just, I guess, one other clarification, too, with the comment that was brought up about the state requirements. So if there's a towing impound yard that wants to be on the towing rotation that the police department, or the sheriff, or highway patrol has, they have to get certified through the state, which means they have to meet state requirements. The city doesn't go and inspect to make sure they meet those requirements. A state inspector would do that. And then they issue that paperwork to the police department, and then the police department can then say, when the applicant would apply for a business license, the police department would be one of their reviewers, and they'd check to see if they have that state requirement. They meet those additional state requirements, if that's what they're pursuing. And then city staff would also review to make sure that they meet the requirements in our code that we're going over today. So it's kind of, two different jurisdictions would be reviewing that if that's what they were pursuing.
Thank you. Ms. Ellsworth?
I have a question. On State Street in this area, what does a future land use map indicate that we would have commercial here in the future, or that we would have residential here in the future?
Josh will put the map on.
In general, not necessarily just as parcel. Mixed use. Mixed use. Okay.
So that could be commercial or commercial with residential?
Yeah. I mean, I agree with the sentiments expressed earlier, that I'd love to see State Street clean and green, and not, not the way it is now. So, yeah, to me, it seems like this kind of use should be back by the railroad tracks, and a happy condominium, you know, could be up here on State Street, but that's not the case yet.
In a perfect world.
Yeah.
Once, once those existing tow yards that are the eyesore we're discussing, once they change ownership, do they then need to comply?
They're supposed to comply right now, whether they change ownership or not, so.
They wouldn't have to comply with the new rules.
The new design standards.
They need to operate.
No, once they're grandfathered, once they're not conforming, they can change ownership and maintain or not conform.
Okay. Is there a trigger if they do any kind of construction or renovation, that they have to then comply to the current?
There's benchmarks as to where that is.
Right.
Can I make a comment?
Please, Mr. Turley.
The tow, the impound yard that's on this site set up shop without any permits. So they went into business, to say the word illegal might be pejorative, but it was illegal. And so this application, my application, was made prior to them coming in and making their application. So they would be, if I've got my facts right, they, this particular would be, would be subject, no?
Yes.
Yeah, so they filed an application after, Mr. Turley. So that application has been sitting on my desk since this all started, because they're going to be subject to whatever new rules go into place. They're subject to the pending legislation. So their conditional use request is being stayed for this debate to take place.
But other ones that were legally permitted prior to this would then be grandfathered in?
I apologize, I misunderstood. I thought you were talking about one, right?
Any existing legal ones, right?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Turley.
But you said conditional use, Mr. Pepperoni. If this gets approved, then we're not talking conditional uses there.
They will be subject to the.
To the, yeah, got it. Which frankly, I'm pretty burnt out on conditional uses. So I appreciate that, for sure.
All right, Commissioners, further discussion, comments, motions?
Ms. Jensen, this question about the increase in the buffering, she said 30 or 40 feet. The plan of the commission would be helpful if you would give us direction, specific direction on that.
Okay. When I saw the 20-foot buffer, I think that's the length of a car. It's not very much, quite honestly. And a mature tree, that you want to see trees and landscaping grow up so that they truly are a buffer. So 30 to 40 feet seemed reasonable.
What's required? So, I mean, just roughly, trees 30 feet on center, do we require a mix of deciduous and coniferous kind of trees? Is there?
For a buffer area?
Because for me, I think like the, like Commissioner Jensen, space matters, but also what happens in the space matters a bunch. So, you know, you could have 20 feet and have that be a very effective buffer, if you have the right things in there, more space, and maybe even have it be less effective than it would be if you had more intense landscaping and that kind of a thing. But I'm comfortable, certainly, I would be inclined to probably set it at 30 and not go beyond that. And maybe we just look at some of those other standards another night and see if we feel like there's a need to make any adjustments there.
Yeah, I think 30 would.
I'm sorry, I didn't give you a chance to answer.
No, I was just going to say, if there's some of those numbers, you can, I'd be fine with you saying what those are, and we just make that as part of your recommendation. You don't necessarily need to continue it for us to bring it back again.
I certainly didn't mean to do that either.
No.
Maybe just at another time, we could look at what the standards are for that buffer space.
Would we also be able to add to that to delete chain link as a?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Jensen, in your opinion, in your experience, is 30 feet give sufficient room for two rows, two layers of some type of landscaping?
Yeah, you could stagger them. Yes.
Yeah.
I'm ready to make a motion. I move that we recommend, we recommend this to the city council, right? We recommend to the city council a positive recommendation. city council, right? We recommend to the city council a positive recommendation for the proposed ordinance attached here, called Attachment 1, with the two changes that we exclude chain link, like we are vinyl fencing. So it would say vinyl fencing and chain link shall not be permitted. And that we increase the buffer to 30 feet, where it used to say 20 feet.
Okay, so the motion is to forward a positive recommendation on item five, as written in Attachment 1, with two changes. One, that the buffer be increased to 30 feet from 20 feet. And two, that we disallow chain link and vinyl fencing as fencing materials.
And then can I make one clarification on that? We also mentioned at the end of paragraph seven, the number of towing companies at a site. If you guys wanted to decide if we strike that last line that's saying, if it's not adjacent to residential, up to three towing companies may operate from the site. Staff's fine with whatever the planning commission would recommend with that.
So I would include in my recommendation that, as stated here, we permit one towing company in areas adjacent to residential zones, and three may operate in, on sites that are not adjacent to residential zones.
Or do you want to, I'm comfortable, so, do we have a second?
Not yet, we haven't gotten there yet.
Okay. Do you mind if I raise a question?
Please, go ahead.
As I understood it, staff's comfortable in certain parts of the community not having the three-company limit?
Now, the one next to residential, I think is important, but.
And I like the idea of encouraging tow yards in those areas that are maybe more remote. So if you had 10 tow, 10 companies operating out of the same tow yard there, so just the idea of eliminating that three-company limit there, I think is good. So I'm comfortable with that, but that's, okay.
So, just striking the last line in number seven?
Yeah, so let's amend that, so that one is, one towing company is permitted next to residential zones. Otherwise, there is no cap.
Yeah, perfect, that's what I.
So we'll add that to the amendment that, let's see.
It's the third change.
Strike, strike final sentence of item seven?
Yeah.
All right, I'm just gonna try to reiterate this. All right. So the motion is to forward a positive recommendation to municipal council for the ordinance text amendment to Section 14.34.350, as articulated in Attachment 1 by staff, with three changes. The first, that a 30-foot buffer be required, that we disallow chain link and vinyl fencing, and third, that the final sentence in Section 7 is stricken.
Final line.
Final line, final sentence, yeah. Do we have a second for that motion? Seconded by Mr. Knutson. All those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation to item five with those three conditions?
Aye.
Right, we will forward a positive recommendation to municipal council with those three conditions. That was unanimous. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Knutson, any seconded by Ms. Ellsworth. So we are adjourned.